Good evening. I would like to call this council meeting to order. Do we have any closed session reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. There's nothing to report out.
All right. If you all would please stand for their pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask our outgoing city manager to please lead us in the pledge.
Right hand over your heart. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Are there any items for agenda review?
Roll call.
Roll call? Right after roll call. We're going to... Roll call, please.
Councilmember Litzter?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Thomas is absent.
And now, are there any items for agenda review?
Mr. Mayor Protem, we do have one supplemental item for Agenda Item 5A. It is in front of you this evening. It's attaching the bulk of the engineer's report that did not make it into the original distribution.
Thank you.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for the vote. Almost.
I think we're having issues with it. Okay.
Let's see if I appear as Fred Thomas.
We didn't switch it. The motion passes unanimously with Mayor Thomas' absence.
Okay. If any matter of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare at this time.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will be recusing myself from Item 5B, 9A, and 9B. My employer has a business relationship with the applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, first on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of Certificates of Commendation for the Simi Valley Youth Council Pinnacle Award and the Community Services Coordinator Ryan Fowler is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Rhodes and members of the city council. The Simi Valley Youth Council was established in 1970 as an advisory board to the city council on youth-related issues and consists of up to 21 members and three alternates between grades seven through 12. The annual recruitment process, which includes both an essay portion and a panel interview, has become exceptionally competitive through the years. To return as a youth council member, it is even more arduous as perusal to the bylaws, only nine members from the previous term may return. Through youth council's history, there have only been a few that have reached an impressive five or six years of service, and this year, we are pleased to recognize three individuals who have accomplished this feat. In honor of this milestone, staff created a special longevity award. Tonight, the city council would like to recognize Abhishek Joghunathan, current chair, Ella McCrossan, current vice chair, and Ian Nelson, current sergeant-at-arms, as the recipients of the Youth Council Pinnacle Award for completing five consecutive years of service on the Simi Valley Youth Council. It has been an honor watching them grow both in leadership skills and in height. A.J., Ella, and Ian, please come forward to be recognized by the city council.
There we go. All right, you three. I'm sorry, it's not Mayor Thomas up here doing this. You get second string. I've been coming to city council meetings for two and a half years and attending from the dais for a year and a half. These others up here, much longer than that. We have watched you excel, watched you grow, watched you become amazing adults, and we're really proud of you. Simi Valley is really proud of you. And if you take the same level of effort into whatever your future holds, you'll be unstoppable. So congratulations to the three of you on this great award. Now, before you go, I have some certificates, but something that's been lacking in city council meetings is the proper way to take a certificate. So I think that you three are the ones to actually demonstrate for the crowd. Ready?
We'll do yours first. The first thing you do is a firm handshake with eye contact. Then with your other hand, you take the certificate. And then turn to the camera. Well done.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next is Item 1D2, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members and Community Services Coordinator Kelly Duffy is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Rhodes and members of city council. Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members act as a conduit between residents and city government on matters that affect the community. During their tenure, these executive board members diligently reviewed, evaluated, and made recommendations to the Planning Commission and City Council on complex development projects. This evening, we are recognizing 16 outgoing members of the Neighborhood Council Executive Boards. As I read their names, I ask the Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members who are present to come forward to receive a certificate of appreciation for their contribution of time and leadership to the community. Neighborhood Council One, Elsa Dreckman, Debbie Ganey, Mark Lucre, David Masso, Cameron Thompson.
I'm Mark Lucre tonight. He's my neighbor. I thought we had picked up his certificate. I did. I'm always there.
Cameron Thompson. Oh, there's more.
There's more.
Neighborhood Council Two. Oh, yes. Cameron. Neighborhood Council Two, Al Brown, Ian Mena, Gail Sutton. Neighborhood Council Three, Bridget Charbonneau, Andy Hanna, Lyle Jackson, Jeremy Yablin. Neighborhood Council Four, Chris Malden, Amy Aubringer, Sawa Charbonne, and Gina Shrinkali.
These two became great friends, serving on the Neighborhood Council together, but that's... You two did. Sorry.
One more. One more, Gina.
Sorry, Gina.
Please join me in congratulating these outgoing Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members on a job well done.
So you don't have to all stand against the wall. Come on up here. Neighborhood council, that service is community service, but it's really city service. And many don't understand the role that you guys play. We give you sometimes some boring, inane topics to look at, give the first eyes on, and input to Planning Commission, and then by default, us. Please know that all of us up here read the reports and the comments that come from the committee, and it does help inform, it does help save time, and when you have more eyes on a project, you know you're going to get the right results. So thank you very much for your service, everybody.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Youth Council Members. Community Service Coordinator Ryan Fowler is presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Rhodes and members of the city council. This evening, we are recognizing 14 outstanding outgoing youth council members. These individuals have contributed their time and exemplary service on the advisory board to the city council on youth-related matters. I'm excited to announce that our graduating seniors have plans to attend the following colleges this fall: UCLA and USC. The rest will be continuing on at their middle and high schools, poised to make remarkable student leaders this coming year. I request that those individuals present this evening come forward as I call your name. Sanjeev Akundi, Geabot, Purnav Bijit, David Chen, Simran Dillon, Abhishek Joghunathan, Sanchita Kartik, Ella McCrossan, Claire Menges, Anika Nedunuri, Ian Nelson, Divya Nana, Jacob Peter Solvenera, and Sanchana Sidra Harin. During this past year, the youth council completed the following: reviewed and organized the printing of teen crisis resource numbers on the back of all Simi Valley Unified School District middle and high school identification cards issued for the 2023-24 school year; successfully hosted the Youth Town Hall in partnership with the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute, which featured a discussion of the social and academic challenges faced by students; co-hosted multiple awareness events with the Simi Valley Public Library, including Teen Wellness Night, attended by more than 300 community members. Additionally, youth council members promoted the program and gave out resources at many local events, including the Street Fair and City Expo, the city's annual YES volunteer fair, YES Job and Career Fair, and the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District's annual Heritage Halloween event. They also held phenomenal fundraising events to help cover costs of all the activities they coordinate. One such event was their annual talent show. With a sold-out crowd, spectacular performances, and generous sponsors, the event was an overwhelming success. Each of these members brought unique skill sets that bolstered the success of the youth council program. I would like to thank all of them for their contributions to the community, and I wish them the best of all things during the years to come. It has been a true honor to work with each of them.
Don't sit down yet. Thank goodness for me, I don't have certificates for all of you, because I'd mess that up too. Mayor Thomas is going to be signing those, and we're going to be sending along certificates to you. There is a cliche, maybe far too often-used cliche, which is, "Children are our future." And today, we get to use that cliche because it actually means something. If what you guys have been able to accomplish in the years that you've spent on youth council is any reflection of what you're going to do in the rest of your life, our city, our state, our country, our world is in good hands. So thank you for being our future.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next is Item 1D4, Presentation of Certificates of Appreciation to Outgoing Youth Employment Services Advisory Board Members and Community Services Coordinator Ryan Fowler is presenting this item.
Good evening again, Mayor Pro Thomas Rhodes and members of the city council. This evening, we are recognizing two outstanding outgoing Youth Employment Services Advisory Board Members. These individuals have contributed their time and effort to serve on the advisory board to the city council on all matters related to youth employment. I request that those individuals present this evening come forward as I call your name: Mark Necca, outgoing local business representative, and John Tolson, outgoing Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce representative. During this past year, the YES advisory board accomplished the following: led interview skills workshops to more than 1,400 high school students; successfully hosted the 36th Annual YES Job and Career Fair in partnership with the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and Simi Valley Public Library; co-hosted multiple YES workshops, including a financial literacy workshop in partnership with Bank of America's Better Money Habits education team. Additionally, the board hosted the city's annual volunteer fair in November and mini-volunteer fair last summer. I would like to thank each of them for their contributions. It has been a privilege working with them.
And if they were here, I would tell them that the first service that I got to do for the city was on this board with Ryan and Kristen and those crew. Do an amazing job making sure that our youth know how to apply for jobs and how to get in front of an employer and show well. So thank them for our service.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next is Item 1D5, Presentation of Employee of the Month Certificate for June 2024. And City Attorney Al Ford is here to present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Rhodes, honorable city council members. I am proud to be presenting Employee of the Month to Sonia Heher from the City Attorney's Office. This award is given to an employee that is willing to go above and beyond their regular job duties, and Sonia has exemplified this from the time that I've worked with her. Sonia was nominated by the Director of Human Resources, Jennifer Gutierrez, and I'm going to read the nomination from her. She said, "Even though Sonia is working to support multiple departments, she always makes time for human resource matters, and she never appears flustered or overwhelmed. Instead, each time, I am greeted with a smile and a sense of urgency that is always needed with HR matters. Her legal knowledge and attention to even the smallest of details make her an invaluable resource. She is a dedicated public servant, and I can think of many instances where Sonia volunteered to jump on a conference call while out of the office to ensure a pressing HR matter continued to move forward. Sonia is a wonderful example of our great city employees and deserves to be recognized as Employee of the Month. And with that, please join me in congratulating Sonia Heher on this accomplishment."
Sonia, I'm so glad that I get to give you this award. The newest member of council, but I valued our interactions together. And just in addition to what was said about you, I know that anyone that you interact with is grateful to have you on their team, and every part of the city that you interact with, which is basically all of it, appreciates you. I just have one complaint. You've dispelled my stereotype of lawyers. So you really deserve this. Congratulations.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next is Item 1D6, Presentation of a 20-year service award to Gilbert Rubago, Environmental Compliance Program Coordinator, Department of Public Works, and Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Rhodes and council members. This evening, I am pleased to join the city council in recognizing Gilbert Rubago for 20 years of service to the city and Public Works. Oh, stand next to the... You get to stand next to the mayor. Come on up. Get to stand to the big man. Yeah, sure. Gilbert was hired in 2004 as an environmental compliance inspector. At that time, he brought a wealth of experience based on his long tenure as a state inspector at Cal EPA Department of Toxic Substances Control. His bilingual education and his Master of Science degree in chemistry proved him a strong foundation for his environmental career. In his decade as a city environmental compliance inspector, Gilbert visited nearly every business in town and can tell you the location of every industrial wastewater discharge and more. I'm not sure that's something we want to... Gilbert was promoted to Environmental Compliance Program Coordinator of the Hazardous Materials Program in 2014. Shortly after, Gilbert was instrumental in leading the effort to characterize and clean up a large mercury spill on Cochran Street. His direct coordination with Cal EPA staff minimized costs of the city estimated to be at potentially a million dollars at that time. In 2015, Gilbert took on additional responsibilities for Solid Waste Program and the Waste Management Franchise Agreement. In 2021, Gilbert became the Environmental Compliance Program Coordinator for Wastewater Pretreatment Program. In his role, he currently directs inspection and sampling activities and ensures that approximately 600 wastewater discharge permits are issued annually. He is proud of the fact that no EPA enforcement action, such as a notice of violation, has been issued during his tenure. Gilbert is a proud father and would like to share that his daughter Michaela graduated from Loyola Law School on May 19, 2024. Chip off the old block? He has never regretted his decision to join the city and get a better work-life balance for his family. Gilbert has also asked me to take this opportunity on his behalf to publicly express his gratitude to Public Works and especially environmental compliance families who provided assistance and support following the unexpected loss of his wife in 2019. As you can imagine, it was tough time for Gilbert, but everybody pitched in to support him in his time of sorrow. In closing, the department is very pleased to have Gilbert as one of its Public Works family members and joins the city council in thanking and congratulating him for 20 years of city service. for 20 years of city service.
Gilbert, before you go. I did a little reading up on you. So, 20 years, that's impressive. The only thing I've done for 20 years is get older. I looked at your first job title, Environmental Compliance Inspector. I thought that's what I did when I went into my son's bedroom. But you have worked your way up the ranks. Being bilingual, having a master's degree, and bringing all of that talent to Simi, we are grateful for. I'm glad that you are still here, because I know you have student debt to pay off now. And I hope that the city council person who is standing here 20 years from now will give you an even cooler pin.
No, thank you so much. But let's not forget my pickleball achievements.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next is item 1D7, Presentation of Certificate of Recognition to outgoing City Manager Brian Gabler from Ventura City Manager Bill Ayew. Unfortunately, Mr. Ayew was unable to attend due to conflict. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next is item 1D8, Presentation of Certificate of Recognition to outgoing City Manager Brian Gabler by Thousand Oaks City Council Member Kevin McNamee.
Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thirty-eight years ago, Brian, you joined the staff here at City Hall. Population was 77,000 people. Today, it boasts of 126,000 as the third-largest city in Ventura County. Simi Valley is so unique. It has a small-town feel, cultural diversity, historic sites. It also has rolling hills, which are quite wonderful to look at. It's also home of the Ronald Reagan Library. Good things are happening here in Simi Valley. It's the hub of entertainment. Films, TV took place here. Everything from Gorgon's Historic Western Ranch to Little House on the Prairie, Captain America, West Wing, Men in Black, The Big Lebowski, as well as N C I S and C S Miami. A lot of things have been happening here in Thousand Oaks during your tenure here, my friend. I would like to say... I'm sorry? No, it's during your tenure here. Tenure here in time. Did I mess that up?
You said... Ken, we appreciate... You just said Thousand Oaks. We love you. Keep going. It's fine. Keep going.
Love you too.
You're nailing it.
You came here as a city manager, or I'm sorry, as a... joining the city staff in 2019, and you became the permanent manager in 2020. You couldn't have picked a better time to become city manager with COVID. Tenuous times, and you helped navigate the city through it. I can tell you that, counsel, you have a tremendous city council here. You have a tremendous city staff here in Simi Valley. But this great city wouldn't be here today if it wasn't standing on the shoulders of previous council members as well as city staff. It's the city staff and the talented people who come here to work at Simi Valley made this this great city that it is today. If my wife Catherine and I were looking to leave Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley would be high on our list to make it and call it our home. You have a beautiful city. You're under a strong leadership with U S City Council members. Brian, thank you for shepherding through their direction and getting city staff to move in the direction that council wants to. Congratulations to you, my friend. And I'd like to, on behalf of the residents of Thousand Oaks, city council members, myself as a council member as well, like to represent... present to you the certificate of recognition.
You studied well.
Thank you all.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next is item 1D9, Presentation of Certificate of Recognition to outgoing City Manager Brian Gabler by City of Moore Park City Manager Troy Brown.
As Brian cringes in his seat. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, members of the city council. Troy Brown, Moore Park City Manager. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the entire team we have over in Moore Park, including the city council and the team of staff that we have at City Hall. Oddly, many of those folks came to us from Simi Valley, so there's quite a bit of sincerity and appreciation between our agencies. Trained them well. Brian Gabler's been an outstanding city manager, and his accomplishments and the work that he puts into Simi Valley transcend your corporate boundaries. Moore Park and Simi Valley share many similar values. As unique and special as Ventura County is, it's the East County that is wholly different. It has different needs and wired differently than other parts of the county. We share a beautiful natural environment that presents different challenges as it relates to wildfires. We experienced the implementation of P S P S events together, and we coordinated our efforts in natural disasters like the EZ Fire. We share similar concerns as it relates to public safety and homelessness, but we also partner on things like the update to our emergency operations plans as it relates to evacuation routes. Our residents enjoy among the highest of municipal services like parks and recreation, public safety, and we partner on many programs offered through our chambers of commerce. Brian has not only been active in this city, but every time I've reached out to him, he's been available to me to answer a question or give me the full context on a range of issues facing our communities. Having a city manager of Brian's stature bodes well for the city of Simi Valley. Brian has been fierce in his efforts to preserve quality of life and fought hard for the city of Simi. If you attend a conference or seminar, you can see that Brian is well-respected among his peers, a statesman, and in many regards, looked favorably upon those that know him. Brian, the city of Moore Park has valued and benefited from having leaders such as yourself right next door. A rising tide raises all ships, and because Simi Valley is better for having you, and they are, Moore Park is better, Thousand Oaks is better, and the East County is better. Thirty-eight years with one city is extraordinary. That long in one organization is very much the exception and not the norm. It truly is. To put that in some perspective, I would need to stay in Moore Park until I was 88 years old. And I'm not up for that. That said, I would like to present this certificate of recognition to you on behalf of the Moore Park City Council, but it's really from our entire team. And it says, "The City Council of the City of Moore Park does hereby recognize Brian Gabler, City Manager, upon his retirement from the city of Simi Valley and his 38 years of public service. A witness thereof, the city council does set its hand and cause the seal of the city of Moore Park to be affixed on this day of June 2024."
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next is item 1D10, Presentation of Retirement Plaque to outgoing City Manager Brian Gabler by Ventura County Fire Department Division Chief Dan Horton.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, council and staff. Tonight, we pause to honor a remarkable individual whose dedication and leadership have left an indelible mark on the city of Simi Valley. I'm honored to speak on behalf of Fire Chief Dustin Gardner and the entire Ventura County Fire Department as we celebrate the retirement of our esteemed city manager, Brian Gabler. Throughout your career, you've demonstrated an unwavering commitment to public service as you guided the city of Simi Valley with integrity and compassion. Under your leadership, you brought forth progress and evolution focusing on infrastructure and the safety and well-being of our residents. Excuse me. Most notably, the design and construction of the police department, the expansion of City Hall, the Boys and Girls Club, the expansion of the Senior Center, and the Town Center Mall, just to name a few. For your fire department, your support has been invaluable. You've understood the critical role we play in the safety and security of our community, and you've always been our steadfast ally. Through your commitment to public safety, fire prevention, and community preparedness, the city has continued to thrive. Whether it be our integration of our fire prevention staff at City Hall or your vision to implement solar technology and power walls to ensure the community has electricity during power outages, you continue to look for opportunities to increase efficiency and resiliency. As you retire, know that your legacy will endure in the safer, stronger, and more vibrant community you've helped build. And your contributions will continue to benefit the Simi Valley for generations to come. While we will miss your guidance and presence, we're excited for you as you embark on this new chapter of your life. A chapter we hope will be filled with joy and relaxation. On behalf of the entire Ventura County Fire Department, we extend our deepest gratitude for your service. Congratulations and best wishes for a wonderful retirement.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item 2, for a period of no more than three minutes each. For the record, persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and the community of residence. Mayor Pro Tem, we have one speaker for this item. Stephanie Wilson.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, and hard-working staff. First of all, I'm Stephanie Wilson, resident of Simi Valley. I'd like to, first of all, acknowledge my fellow new arts commissioners, Janet Plant, who I have had the joy of working with for two years. She's not new, but she's returning. And Lauren Hammersley, who I'm looking forward to getting to know. The mayor of Baton Rouge once said, "The arts are the best insurance policy a city can take on itself." Like every person needs insurance for car accidents and cavities, every city needs arts for broken hearts and lost souls. So, I thank the city of Simi Valley for helping ensure that we cash in on that policy right here in our own city. One of my many jobs as an arts commissioner is to be an advocate and remind us all why the arts are so important. So, I'm going to do that in one minute. We know that the arts are an important economic driver, creating jobs and producing tax revenue. We know they stimulate business activity, attracting tourism. A shameless shout-out to Visit Simi Valley. Attract tourism and expand a city's workforce and tax base. We know that the arts cultivate young imaginations and facilitate success in school. But let's talk about how they are a true civic catalyst. They create a welcoming sense of place and a desirable quality of life. They support strong democracy. They engage citizens by getting them to talk to each other. And they add a long cultural legacy to Simi Valley by preserving our culture and our heritage and passing along our city's unique character and traditions to future generations. So, thank you, members of the council, for supporting the arts. Keep fighting, keep working, keep creating, because you are our insurance policy against broken hearts and lost souls. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item 3A1, Reappointment of Trustee Judge to serve on the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2024-25, A Resolution of the City of Simi Valley... or I'm sorry, of the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees reappointing trustee judge to the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees. And Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is here to present this item.
Good evening, Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees. In 2012, the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees established the initial terms of office of the board with three-year terms of service for each trustee. The term of trustee judge is scheduled to expire on June 30, 2024. Therefore, it is recommended that the board adopt a resolution to reappoint trustee judge to the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2024 and expiring June 30, 2027. No other board positions are expiring this year. This concludes the report, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
I move that we adopt the attached Resolution Number 2024-25, reappointing trustee judge to serve on the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees for an additional term through June 30, 2027.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item 3A2, Appointment of Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members to the four neighborhood councils. And Community Services Coordinator Kelly Duffy is presenting this item.
Good evening again, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes and members of city council. Since 1970, the neighborhood councils have served as an important component in the city government structure. They promote citizen awareness and participation in local government. They advise the city council and Planning Commission on development projects and citizen concerns. There are a total of 22 vacancies on the four executive boards of the neighborhood councils. Tonight, 17 applicants are being nominated to serve terms commencing on July 1, 2024 and expiring on June 30, 2026. As I read your name, will the nominees who are present this evening please come forward? Neighborhood Council 1, Moses Ongolian. Viki Ball. Sparky Cohen. Laura Heard. Jeff Plam. Masako Jaeger. Neighborhood Council 2, Carl Birch. Neighborhood Council 3, Steve Bosco. Andy Gautier. David Critzer. Robert Martins. Nick Polke. Donald Weismar. Neighborhood Council 4, Stephanie Bunker. Karen Diem. Alessandro Neary. Art Semery. It is recommended that the city council approve and the mayor pro tem appoint all 17 applicants nominated to serve on the executive boards of the four neighborhood councils for a term commencing on July 1, 2024 and expiring on June 30, 2026.
And I gratefully move their appointment. Thank you all for being willing to serve. So appreciate it. I know Rocky has... I know you have something to say, but I just wanted to make the official motion.
I'll second.
Call for the vote. And please vote yes for me.
The motion passes unanimously.
It was a tough vote. It was a tough vote, but we got there. I get... All council people get to interview our prospective volunteers to come and be a part of this. And I've had the opportunity to interview some of you and get to know you. I'm looking forward to getting to know you better. Thank you for your willingness to serve. It means a lot to our city. As I said to the outgoing members, you put extra eyes onto these projects, which really helps us out in the long run. So, write good reports. All right. Thank you, guys. Everybody.
Upcoming year of service.
Oh, he was sitting here.
I'd like to officially welcome the mayor.
Hi, Fred. You want to take a breath?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A3, Appointment of Simi Valley Arts Commissioners and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is presenting the item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Arts Commission is responsible for promoting greater public participation in and access to arts and culture, exploring alternative sources of arts and culture funding, planning arts programs and events, developing a master cultural plan, applying for grants, reviewing the annual financial and operational plans for the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center, and reinforcing the arts as a vital integral and necessary component of life for all members of the community. Membership on the Arts Commission is comprised of eight members, including two City Council members, five City Council-appointed public members, and one Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation Board of Director. All public members serve staggered two-year terms of office. Arts Commission members may serve two consecutive terms and may serve additional terms provided 12 months have lapsed between appointments beyond two consecutive terms. The terms of service for three City Council-appointed public members will conclude on June 30, 2024. On May 14, 2024, Councilmember Littster and Arts Commissioner Savell interviewed the applicants and nominated three for appointment to two-year terms on the Arts Commission. These terms began July 1, 2024, and conclude on June 30, 2026. As I call your name, please come forward. Lauren Hammersley. Janet Plant. Stephanie Wilson.
Where is everybody?
It is rec- It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint the three applicants nominated to the Simi Valley Arts Commission. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Oh, yeah, good. Somebody want to move?
I'll make the motion that we approve and the mayor appoint the following candidates.
Second.
Call for the vote? Vote yes for me. Get your steps in.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Littster and I are here because we're also on the Arts Commission, and what you said was beautiful, couldn't have said it better, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A4, Appointment of Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation Board Members and Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation is a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides endowment and annual financial support for the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. The Foundation Board is comprised of up to 21 voting members, including seven City Council-appointed public members. All members serve staggered four-year terms. On May 23, 2024, Mayor Thomas and Mayor Protam Rhodes interviewed the applicants, five of which are being recommended for appointment this evening. The following Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Board applicants have been nominated. As I call your name, please come forward. Laura Critzer. Sam Cohen. Martin Hall. Taylor Coe. And Michael Spurber. It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint the five nominees to the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation Board for a term commencing July 1, 2024, with one term concluding on June 30, 2026, and four terms concluding on June 30, 2028. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
I am happy to move that approve and the mayor appoint the applicants nominated to the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation with terms commencing July 1, 2024.
Second.
I just want to say, having been on the interview here, I love the fact, the passion that these people had about our arts program, and I know they're going to do a good job. So thank you very much.
The motion passes unanimously.
Did you give him the pin?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A5, Appointment of Youth Council Members and Community Services Coordinator, Ryan Fowler, is presenting the item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Simi Valley Youth Council was established in 1970 as an advisory board to the City Council on issues of concern to local youth, and consists of 21 members and up to three alternates in grades 7 through 12. Youth Council members' terms of office expire on June 30 of each year. A recruitment to fill the 24 Youth Council positions was opened on March 8, 2024, and concluded on April 26, 2024. A total of 60 applications were received. Interview panels met on May 28, June 12, and June 13 to interview the applicants. The interview panels nominated 21 applicants for Youth Council membership and three alternates. The following Youth Council applicants have been nominated for appointment. As I call your name, please come forward. Representing Royal High School, Jasling Kangura. Ryland Downey. Representing Santa Susanna High School, Advath Nair. Nicole Kim. Representing Simi Valley High School, Nandija Krishnamoorthy. Kalisa Row. Representing Hillside Middle School, Amen Sriji. Representing Sinaloa Middle School, Hannah Khalil. Representing Valley View Middle School, Arjun Prabhu Ram. Representing the community at large, Ethan Bot. Prithika Bijit. Sanvi Doga. Chloe Drury. Abhishek Khambay. Kirten Iju. Tanvi Iju. Lakshmi Julakanti. James Laquang. Rhythmika Naveen. Sadie Rowe. Kartik Vishnu Balhatla. And his alternates, Nishtha Kubsad. Natalie Nguyen. And Michelle Sebastian. It is recommended that the City Council authorize and the mayor appoint the 24 applicants nominated to serve one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing on July 1, 2024, and concluding on June 30, 2025. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer questions at this time.
Well, I can tell you from my experience, this is one of the most impressive groups, the stuff they accomplish and get done. I mean, it just never ceases to amaze me. Oh, good job, you guys, seriously. We're going to need to get you guys all down here, though, in one group for a photo, okay?
And I think, right, didn't you mention that it took three days of interviews to try to figure out, to narrow it down to this group? We're talking some major competition. Congratulations to all of you here, and I would be honored to move that we, that their appointments be accepted and approved.
Second. The motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, mayor.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A6, Appointment of Youth Employment Services Advisory Board Members and Community Services Coordinator, Ryan Fowler, is presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Since 1982, the Youth Employment Services Advisory Board has advised the City Council on matters related to youth employment. The board is comprised of 18 members. A total of eight positions are currently vacant, three regular, three designated, and two alternate member positions. On June 5, a YES Advisory Board Interview Subcommittee interviewed the eligible applicants and nominated three for appointment. Additionally, the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Simi Valley Unified School District nominated representatives for their two vacant positions on the YES Advisory Board. If appointed, the applicants will serve terms commencing on July 1, 2024, and concluding on June 30, 2026, with the exception of the local government representative position with a partial term that will conclude on June 30, 2025. The following individuals are being nominated this evening for appointment, and if present, please come forward as I say your name. Local Government Representative, Bernardo Perez, Community College Trustee and Board Chair, Ventura County Community College District. Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce Representative, Anthony Angelini, Director of Tourism and Government Affairs, Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. Simi Valley Unified School District Representative, Rita Longo, Work Experience and Career Education, Royal High School. And Alternated Large Representatives, Eric Verwee, Fire Explorer Advisor, retired, Los Angeles Fire Department, and President of the California Fire Exploring Association, and Stacy Roth, Learning Center Coordinator, Vista Real Charter High School. The Youth Employment Services Advisory Board, the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the Simi Valley Unified School District recommend that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint applicants nominated to the Youth Employment Services Advisory Board. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer questions.
Well, I feel strongly about anyone that's willing to invest their time for our youth. So, good job. Thank you very much.
I'll move to approve and the mayor appoint the five applicants nominated to the Yes Advisory Board.
Second.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A7, Ratification of the Appointment of a Representative to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council and Assistant Community Services Manager, Robert Martin, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Ventura County Area Agency on Aging, VC AAA, represents the concerns of senior citizens countywide. It provides leadership, advocacy, and visibility for persons age 60 and over within Ventura County. The VC AAA Advisory Council is comprised of two representatives from each city within the county and serves to advise the VC AAA on matters related to persons age 60 and over. Each City's Council on Aging Executive Board selects two representatives to serve two-year staggered terms on the Advisory Council, which are then ratified by the representatives, by the representative city councils, and appointed to the 20-member VC AAA Council. On May 13, 2024, the Council on Aging voted to recommend the appointment of Susan Zernite, subject to the City Council's ratification. If ratified, this will be Susan Zernite's first term commencing July 1, 2024, and concluding June 30, 2026. It is recommended, it is the recommendation of the City Council, excuse me, it is the recommendation of the Council on Aging that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint Susan Zernite as a representative to the VC AAA Advisory Council. Susan Zernite is not here this evening due to a prior commitment. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
I'm happy to motion. She's highly qualified. There's been a, it's been a bit of a wait for her to get on board, and so delighted that she, to move the ratification of the appointment of Susan Zernite as a city representative to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council with a term commencing on July 1, 2024.
Second. The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Item 3C1, Informational Presentation by Youth Council Member Ian Nelson.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the Youth Council. My name is Ian Nelson, and I recently graduated from Grace High School, and I'll be attending UCLA this fall and rooming with former Youth Council Chair Abhishek Jagannathan. So, thank you for having me. This is my fifth term serving on the Youth Council and my fourth as its Sergeant-at-Arms. Tonight, I'll be providing an update on our recent activities and a light recap of our whole term this year. So our last regular meeting was on May 21, and big thank you to Councilmember Littster, who graciously brought us pizza to celebrate, so can we have a round of applause for her? We have been hosting special meetings at the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District's Barrowwood Teen Center. With school now out, we have decided to host one last event for this Youth Council term, introducing the Phantom Escape Room Fundraiser. I'm pleased to announce that on June 26 and 27, we will be hosting 12 sessions for our fifth annual escape room. We encourage the community and City Council members to come along for this thriller of an escape room, with all the proceeds going to Forever Found, a local nonprofit that provides resources and support for victims of human trafficking. This event will be at the Barrowwood Parks Teen Center and is our most ambitious escape room yet. So to go reserve your space, go to bit.ly/ycescaperoom24. The Teen Crisis Resource Number Committee met this last month to review and modify the resource numbers that will be printed on the back of all Simi Valley Unified School District middle and high school student ID cards. The committee improved the clarity, format, and numbers included so that students could more easily read the contact numbers in times of need. Thank you to Committee Chair Ethan Bot for removing the Comic Sans font located on the ID. We at the Youth Council have had an incredible year, and it's felt like we have rebounded swiftly from COVID and hosted some of our biggest events for the community. So starting in September, we held our fifth annual suicide prevention rock painting night with a Yogurtland fundraiser to raise money and awareness for suicide prevention efforts. With hundreds of attendees at the Simi Valley Library, it was our biggest rock painting night ever. In October, Youth Council members volunteered at the Simi Valley Street- at the Simi Valley Street Fair and City Expo to help spread awareness of Youth Council events and get teens interested in volunteering. We also got to dress up and volunteer for Heritage Halloween at Strathairn Historical Park, a tradition that has been going there since I joined the Youth Council in eighth grade. We hosted the 2024 Youth Town Hall on February 26th with the topic of teen mental health related to academic stress. And then in March, held our sixth annual talent show, showcasing talented Simi Valley youth and adults at the Cultural Arts Center. We again sincerely want to thank the volunteers that helped make the event run smoothly, and our plans for next year are to start the show earlier and streamline and shorten the event. We are extremely grateful to the community for supporting this event, which has sold out the last few years. For next year, members may have to look at other options for venues to accommodate all the performers, or look at hosting the event over two nights. In April, we also held our first multicultural fair, Roots and Rhythm, in collaboration with Santa Susana High School. There are already plans for an even bigger event next year, so stay tuned. And last month, AJ mentioned in his report that our second annual Teen Wellness Night, which was our biggest event of the year with more than 300 in attendance over the course of the event, we successfully helped hundreds of teens reduce their screen time for our second annual Unplug Day, held meditation sessions, and showcased mental health resources and local clubs that promoted well-being. And now, in June, we are hosting the previously mentioned Escape Room. The 2023 through 2024 term was special in that we raised thousands of dollars to help support our community projects and events throughout the year, donated money to mental health resources and support for humans of human trafficking, and foster youth in need. So, looking ahead, we want to continue to raise awareness and provide support for local organizations that make a difference in the lives of our community. If you're interesting, interested in learning about our future initiatives the Youth Council has in store, please follow us at Simi Valley Youth Council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, as well as SYVC on 2029 on TikTok. Our first meeting of the 2024 Youth Council term is scheduled from 4:15 to 6:15 PM on August 20th at the Simi Valley Senior Center. Remember that these meetings are open to the public, so if anyone is interested, please feel free to attend. And on a personal note, I just want to thank Mayor Thomas and the members of the City Council for your unwavering support over the past few years. Last month, AJ, he specifically mentioned your encouragement of the Youth Council being super beneficial. And it's been awesome seeing your faces since I was here in eighth grade. And knowing that what we did over the last five years did make a difference. When I first joined, I remember being so nervous and sitting up here giving a report. It was my first time ever doing it. I remember having a migraine, my palms were sweaty, and I stuttered like a maniac. But I have a vivid memory of Councilmember Judge jokingly reassuring me the whole time I sat on the dice. Moments like that make me realize that the Youth Council does really matter. The platform that the City Council provides creates opportunities for growth, leadership, and change, and ways to find good roommates at UCLA. So, if you have any questions at this time, I'll be happy to answer them, and thank you all. Have a great night.
Councilmember Litzner.
So, Ian, did I hear you say that you have served four terms as Sergeant-at-Arms?
Yeah, I was too lazy to run for vice.
I just wanted to understand. No, I'm not sure anyone will know how to do it since you've done it so well for four terms. And can you tell us exactly how many chocolate chip cookies you have brought?
Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. Okay, so roughly, we meet twice a month, roughly, across about, I'd say, 10 months. So, if we do some very quickly, quick math, that's two times 10. So, that's 20-ish meetings roughly. I brought cookies in, because there were a few I missed. Let's assume that out of the 24 Youth Council members, we give them two cookies each, so that's 48. Over how many years? Holy crap, five years. That's around 4,000 cookies. So, yeah, about 4,000.
What you don't realize every time, has he brought cookies, chocolate chip cookies? You're starving, and you look to Ian, he's there to help you out. So, I don't know that anyone's going to ever fill that spot, but you hard bar there, it's hard bar. So, this is kind of your swan song? Or is this just the starting point?
I kind of wanted to like, I started off my first term giving a presentation here, so I kind of wanted to end it this way. And then also, AJ already wrote like half of it, so I could just plagiarize.
What a good roommate. You've picked well. You've picked well, and you've picked well, picked well and going to UCLA. Let me just say that. Actually, just wanted to say, Ian, you've been fabulous. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Ian, while that was impressive, I understand there was another presentation where someone actually memorized the speech coming up. I thought you were going to set the bar. No, no. Thank you for all your years of service, and congratulations, and go forth and conquer.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I've enjoyed watching you grow. It's been a lot of fun, and I really enjoyed you on your robots. Your robotics is awesome. So, congratulations on that. You will be missed, and I'm going to post that picture so your mom can have it, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Judge.
You've done a great job. I'm so happy to see you moving on and going to college. That's awesome. I hope you do very well. I'm looking forward to many things in the robotics field.
Well, I got to tell you, you know, I praise you council all the time. An amazing group and all the stuff they do. But you are absolutely one of the bright spots. I've crossed your path so many times, watched you in action, and I know that, you know, what you've done here is just the beginning. I know you're going to be a star at UCLA and on into life, and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item four, Public Statements. During this Agenda Item Number Four, the City Council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called to speak during Agenda Item Number Six, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four and Agenda Item Number Six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this Public Statements Item Four for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we will begin the public statements. Chuck Carmichael.
Don't take it personal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all of the rest of you. 22 years ago, I joined the board at the Simi Valley Family YMCA. I take great pride in the time that I have spent there. We have, it has been a family affair. It serves the youth of this community. I heard the art people say that the art was the heart of the city. I disagree. I think the youth is the heart of the city. I think it's our future. The YMCA needs a small piece of land that is currently used as kind of a construction lot some of the time when they're not helping themselves to the YMCA's parking lot. We can serve more people if we have that additional land that is unused, uncared for, costs the city nothing, and it enhances everything that we can do for the community. Okay? When you, when it comes time to vote this evening, please help me out, help the community out, help the YMCA out. Okay? Thank you very much.
Mark Rutherford.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Mark Rutherford. I am a board member of the YMCA currently, and prior to that, I was on the Westlake Village City Council for over 20 years. And during that time, I was very involved in the creation and development of the Westlake Village Community Center, and now what's on it is the YARO YMCA. I actually thought this was going to be a public hearing. I realize it's on your consent calendar, so there's a lot here I'm not going to go into. But really, what you're being asked tonight is to approve a letter of intent. And that letter of intent just has concepts on it, no real specifics. So, in essence, what you're being asked to do is plant some seeds, to have a vision, to have kind of a dream of having some type of facility on that property that would basically contribute significantly to long-term benefits to your community. That's really what the city of Westlake Village was facing 25 years ago when we entered into a joint venture with this same YMCA. At that time, our concept was, can we create a flat pad between two hills? And we had no idea what we were going to put there. We didn't know how many fields, how many swimming pools, how many community centers. What we had was that vision, that we needed a place for our residents to go together, where families could go together, where they could exercise, where they could learn, and quite frankly, where they could have fun. Fast forward today, I go up on that hill, and it's just amazing. First of all, it is literally packed all day long, seven days a week, where there's kids going up there playing ball games, learning to swim, having swim meets. We have seniors that are in therapy pools, learning and exercising, really, really enjoying the community together, enjoying these activities together. And personally, I have to tell you, every time I go up there, the joy I feel, the good feelings I have on the inside because I was really instrumental in creating a facility that does so much for my community. This evening, if you vote for this letter of intent, I promise you, someday, and I can't promise when, because fundraising is an issue, but someday, when you go to that facility where the Phase 3 is finished, you too will have really, really good feelings inside because you're the ones that are planting the seed that will create a facility that, for your community, where they can go and do things together and learn and exercise and have fun. I really hope you do vote for it. Thank you.
Ronnie Stone.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I thought I'd go a different direction tonight. We're hearing about this parcel, but I thought maybe we would just take a minute to thank Brian. We haven't heard from anybody tonight thanking him. Just kidding, Brian. I do want to share deep gratitude. Brian has been extremely helpful in working with the Y to kind of get the city and the Y back connected and partnering. So, thank you, Brian. We're going to miss you. Looking forward to the next chapter. But as you heard, we're really looking for the future, and this piece of property that we're talking about tonight is significant, maybe not for tomorrow, but for the future for our community. And Simi Valley is, the Y is going to explode with Phase 2 and then leaving it up to Phase 3. It's only going to get bigger and better. So, many of you have heard what we're doing in Phase 2. Phase 3, we've just touched the surface, but we're excited. Our Y is becoming that community hub once again, and I think this extra property is only going to create more community space for everyone to enjoy. So, please consider us tonight, and thank you all for your time. Appreciate very much, and Brian, thanks again.
Martin Erickson.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the City Council. It is an honor to be back in city of Simi Valley, especially witnessing such strong public spiritedness with the events earlier. My name is Martin Erickson. I'm the Executive Director of the Ventura County Transportation Commission. And the Transportation Commission is represented by 17 members. It's a regional county-wide agency. All 10 cities of Ventura County, the five county supervisors, and then two public members, one appointed by the cities, one appointed by the county, comprise my board. And the city of Simi Valley has been ably represented for many years by Councilmember Judge, who's also serving as my Vice Chair this year. I brought for you tonight, I'm making the rounds to all the cities, our annual Community Impact Report, which came out a few months ago. Some of you may have seen it already, but I, it's the first time we've done this type of report, and it provides, I think, an excellent snapshot of the many activities that VCTC is involved in. We have, again, a 17-member board and a small but mighty staff of 24, which I am, which I am very grateful for, to accomplish a lot of things beyond just programming the majority of the federal and state transportation and transit money that comes into Ventura County. We also provide the Big Blue Bus Service, VCTC Inner City. We're a MetroLink member agency. And recently, we provided Freeway Service Patrol, or FSP. I hope no one has had to experience that recently, but that is the roving tow trucks on the 118 and 101 that will provide, free of charge, towing assistance if you have a breakdown, tire repair if you have a flat tire, and they'll even provide you a free gallon of gas if you run out of gas. So, it's been a great service and very well received. Also, before I became Executive Director, I was the Transit Director for six years, and we've had some great transit achievements, including our College Ride Program, state-funded program, and our Youth Ride Free Program, both of which have played a big role in bringing transit ridership back after the pandemic. I also want to recognize Councilmember Judge for not only being my Vice Chair, but he also serves as the Vice Chair on the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, Transportation Committee. And having worked for a city at one point in my life, I know how busy you all are as City Council members, and you're serving on many regional boards. And I do appreciate the time that Councilmember Judge puts into VCTC. He's also served on some of our ad hoc committees, some that take a lot of time with some rather contentious negotiations. And again, I just want to thank him for that and thank the city for its partnership. And finally, thank outgoing City Manager Brian Gabbler for his partnership and friendship and mentorship throughout the years. Thank you all.
Jenny Knack.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jenny Knack with Parents Against the Santa Susana Field Lab. This is my daughter Cora. Before I get started on what I'm asking you tonight, I just want to mention the reason why I'm still advocating for the full cleanup of the Santa Susana Field Lab is because kids in the community are still getting sick. I'm really lucky that Cora is healthy. But last year in her jujitsu class, we're relatively new to Simi. We moved in in 2018. Last year, one of her teammates was diagnosed. That was completely random, had nothing to do with my advocacy work for the full cleanup. But what I'm here for tonight specifically is to discuss the PEIR that was released last year, last summer. The PEIR, even though DTSC will tell you otherwise, broke the cleanup agreements to remediate to background levels of contamination at the site. They will tell you that the time is not now to sue. But it is, because if they tell you to wait for the decision documents to roll out piecemeal, it will be more expensive and there will be no political will because alone, those decisions won't seem like a very big deal. And it'll still cost a lot of money. So, what we're asking is that you sue now. The PEIR broke the cleanup agreements specifically in one way, by limiting the amount of soil that will be remediated on-site. It will leave over 90% of the contaminated soil on the Boeing parcel, which is 80% of the SSFL land. And NASA and DOE's parcels together will be over 60, roughly 63% of the contaminated soil will be left. That decision was made in the PEIR. So, we're asking you to do the most fiscally conservative thing that you could do. It will save money to litigate now. Our community can't wait. Our kids can't wait. People are continuing to get sick, and they will do so until you act. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight.
Larry Glover.
Hi, all. I hope this is the right venue for my issue. It's a safety issue. I've been kind of elected by the neighbors on the street. We live on Codota Street, which is between Alamo and Barnard, basically. People, it's a wide street, and people are using it as a shortcut to get to Cochrane or to get to the freeway, and speeding constantly down the street. And there's been several accidents. There's been two just this year, and there's a lot of kids on the street now. So, it's becoming a big issue, and it's getting, going to be getting worse because the huge apartment. because the huge apartment complex that they're building on Alamo, all those people are probably going to be going down our street also. So, it's been an issue. I know it's been raised before, and neighbors have wanted to put speed bumps, and the city didn't want to do that. Apparently, one side of the street is dirt, and so that's why they ruled out speed bumps. But we do have an easy solution for the problem. There's two intersecting streets there, Meere Wood and Adam. And if they just put stop signs at those intersections, people would either slow down and/or go around and use the main streets. Codota is kind of a wide street, so people just blast right down it. So, you know, I don't know if you guys could tell me who to talk to or the right department to look at this issue. But it is a safety issue, and it's been a safety issue for several years. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Veronica Rodarte?
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Council, staff. My name is Veronica Rodarte. I come to speak to you on behalf of the Simi Valley YMCA. I'm a longtime supporter. The YMCA was my first job at 17. I'm now a board member, and I've been, like I said, a proud supporter and volunteer for over 20 years. Simi Valley is a very special place. I'm a lifelong Caneo Valley resident as well, but it's a special place. The addition of that space behind the Y would give us an opportunity to serve even more people, to create that community hub, to serve everyone from toddlers to seniors, to get them swimming, active, and really build strong families, strong kids, and strong communities. So, if you would please support that letter of intent, we would appreciate it and really allow us to continue to make Simi Valley a great place and continue to let us serve the population at large. Thank you.
Ruth Luvenos?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. In case you didn't get to see my sign, I'll slowly peruse it like Van Nuys. I was here on City Council when we agreed as a City Council to join the litigation along with the City of Los Angeles, the County of Los Angeles, and Ventura County Board of Supervisors to sue for the full cleanup to background levels of Santa Susana Field Lab. That was in 2022 when you, before you were Mayor Fred Thomas, you came and said that you supported us and you thanked us as a City Council for joining the litigation. It is your responsibility as elected officials to keep the residents of Simi Valley safe. And right now, we're not safe. The cleanup has not started. They have broken their legal agreements, and we need you, our elected officials, to join the lawsuits along with Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Los Angeles City Council to keep the residents of Simi Valley safe. I am tired of consoling parents whose children get cancer, who don't survive cancer, entire families who are wiped out from cancer. Every day, I look at the scar on my arm as a cancer survivor, and I wonder, is the cancer going to come back? Is it going to take my kids? We need you to be our voice. We need you to use the resources that you have, the city attorney, in order to sue and hold the Department of Toxic Substances Control accountable. We need you to hold the Governor of California accountable, who oversees DTSC. We need you to sue. We need you to be our voice. We need you to make sure that no one else has to bear their child, mother, father, brother, cousin, teacher, student, from cancer. The research is there. We know there's a higher incidence of cancer for those who live within five miles of the Santa Susana Field Lab. That includes me and my family. Every time I talk to someone who lives in Simi Valley, who just moved to Simi Valley five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, last month, they ask me about Santa Susana Field Lab. So, we need you to be the advocates that you were elected to be. We need you to take a leadership role, not a backseat. We need you to be active and actively sue DTSC before the statute of limitations runs out, before we run out of time to sue them and hold them accountable. We need you to do this on behalf of the residents and especially the children, who are the most vulnerable of getting cancer and dying from cancer in the city of Simi Valley. This is my plea, and I thank you for your time.
Tiffany Ruiz?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Ruiz. I'm here with my son Mateus. And I'm just going to keep it very short and simple. There's nothing that I can do as a parent, as a person here, to clean up the Santa Susana Field Lab. It's, my son said it very simply one time, "If you make a mess, you need to clean it up." And it's very sad that money is really winning in this situation, so I please ask that you guys just do the right thing and sue DTSC. Like now, this is just something that's very important to this community, and I represent many, many other families that have the same sentiment. They just, they're tired. They can't, we're tired of it. And so, I'm here to represent all those families. Thank you.
Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the City Council, City Manager Gabler. Before I get into what I was really going to talk about, let me start off by saying that even a broken clock is right twice a day. And for that, I've got to agree with the former Councilwoman Luvenos. We need a full cleanup of the Santa Susana Field Lab. There's just no, it's just not acceptable to not have one. That said, I really wanted to come tonight to thank Brian Gabler for his long tenure of service with the city. I first got to know City Manager Gabler when I had a streetlight that was out. It was actually flickering, and it was one of the old sodium streetlights. And it was flickering, and it was flickering something fierce. And I'm on a cul-de-sac where there really aren't that many streetlights to begin with. So, when it would go out, it was pitch black. And when it was on, it would flicker and flicker and flicker. Thankfully, you know, only my, our kitchen is towards the front of the house, so that was the only thing that could see it. But I called Brian because I had tried calling Edison. They said, "Nope, it's the city." Actually, they sent somebody out. They sent somebody out thinking there was some sort of an emergency where my power was out, and it wasn't. So, I called the city and got ahold of Brian. And Brian, he kind of scared me off a little bit at first because he said to me, "Joe, I drove past your house last night, and I saw the light." I'm like, "Really?" It kind of freaked me out. Only then did I find out that he lived basically right around the block. I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss that kind of service, though, especially given the latest issue we've had, which is the high-water table over on Martha Morrison Drive, which we thought was taken care of, and it's now back again. And I'm just hoping that that gets resolved as quickly as possible. But anyway, Brian, thank you for your service, and I just want to take another second to welcome Samantha Argabright. I think she's going to do a fantastic job for our city. And so, thanks again, Brian, and have a great time in Oregon.
Mike Dutra?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Dutra, and I am a board member with the YMCA. I've been a board member there for about 20 years, and I'm here to support the YMCA with the land in Simi Valley. As the Y grows, the community grows, and we are really looking, what we've seen in Westlake Village with the amount of activity that's happened, we never had any facility in that area, in Caneo Valley. And then when we had the Westlake Village YMCA, now the Yara YMCA, it's just a buzz of activity, and we're hoping for the same in Simi. So, the board members are really active on helping grow the Simi Valley YMCA, so I'm here to support that. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Item 4A, Council Comments, or City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Gabler?
Thank you. I don't usually get it first. Okay, thanks. YMCA Board, thank you all for being here. It is on the consent item calendar, so we'll see how that goes. Oh, I thought you said, oh, somebody said consent item. Yeah, Mike and I are both wrong. Okay, that's all right. Doesn't happen very often. Thank you, thank you. So, we'll be discussing that without a problem. And Martin has always, well, he already left. VCTC, they do a great job. I do see those, the free tow trucks on the freeway. It's really kind of a nice feeling for me, being a female driving. It's like, hey, they're there if you need something, you know? It's kind of nice to see them out there. They're available. Mr. Glover, I saw that Ron Fujiwaki reached out to you. I'll also follow up with that because that's in my district. And we do need to look some more at Santa Susana Field Laboratory. So, new City Manager Samantha Argabright, that's probably going to be your, one of your big things from us. That's all for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for everything you came and spoke, especially all the nice words about running and everything. I do want to ask the city attorney to give us an update, maybe put it in our boxes or send us an email on what's gone on since the last time we did something to Santa Susana Field Laboratory because at that time, the whole council was on board with saying, "Yes, you've got to clean it up." We've never, we've never wavered from that position, and we won't. So, we'd like to get a status on that, please.
Councilmember Littsger?
Thank you. I should just say ditto to all of the above. Thank you, actually, to all of the representatives from the YMCA. It has been a beautiful place for my family as well, and I know that it'll be a fun discussion that we will have in new business. Unfortunately, it'll be towards the end of the night, so if you don't stick around, we understand. But we'll keep you updated. And yes, thank you, Martin, for your service with VCTC and appreciate this report and what's happening there. And ditto again as far as Mr. Glover and your concerns about Codota. Glad that, as you mentioned, he's been reached out to. And then finally, actually, well, yes, I agree. It was my understanding as well that Santa Susana Field Lab, that we had joined a lawsuit with the State of LA at one time. And so, again, status report would be appreciated where we stand with that. And I suspect we'll be thanking you, Brian, towards the end of the night, maybe get that opportunity. But it's gratifying to hear about all the many things you've done behind the scenes, including the flickering lights. And so, in fact, I know I have texted him on several things, even just yesterday, maybe about some stoplights throughout. Anyway, very much appreciate his work. But again, thank you all for being here, your comments and your participation and your diligence with this great city.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and participating. And YMCA, great organization. My only involvement was back when they were originally raising money to build the current clubhouse in the first place. And then I got recruited by the Boys and Girls Club. Santa Susana Field Lab. So, I wanted to properly educate myself, and I met with all three federal organizations, took tours, tried to get, you know, my perspective on this. And the problem is, is that what they're doing, the federal agencies, the state agencies, all say is correct. And yet, there's a whole group that says it's not. And I guess, for me, the challenge is, who is it that's going to make the final decision? Because right now, supposedly, everything's agreed and moving forward. And, but I also want to make sure that, no matter who says what, that we end up getting the right thing done and we end up, you know, doing what's right for our city. So, whatever we can do, I want to pursue that. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for public testimony on hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. That the record show that due notice was given as required by law and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted for this public testimony, Item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Public Hearing 5A, a public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 assessments for Simi Valley Landscape District Number 1 and adoption of a resolution approving the assessments. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2024-26, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Confirming the Diagram and Assessment for Those Lots and Parcels Included Within Simi Valley Landscape District Number 1, Leaving the Assessments for the Fiscal Year 2024-25 and Ordering Improvements Specified in the Engineer's Report as Approved in Resolution Number 2024-26. And Public Works Director Ron Fujiwaki is here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Councilmembers. This is our annual item to approve proposed fiscal year assessments for the Simi Valley Landscape District. On May 20th, the City Council adopted the necessary resolutions and set a public hearing for June 24th, 2024, to consider the proposed FY 24-25 assessments for Landscape District Number 1. No change to the existing assessments are being recommended. The district operates under the authority of the State Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. There are a total of 99 landscape zones in the district, including 48 active zones, one of which encompasses all the city controls in her areas, and 51 contingency fallback zones. Active zones are maintained by the city and funded through assessments to the property owner within each active zone and a contribution from the general fund. Fallback zones are maintained by homeowners' associations or property owners. For FY 24-25, excuse me, the cost to maintain the assessment zone areas is approximately 1.36 million, which would be funded by approximately 800,000 from assessments and 562,000 from the Landscape Augmentation Fund, which is funded by the general fund. Staff continues to take steps to explore opportunities to reduce costs, including modifying landscape maintenance contracts by reducing the frequency of certain tasks and applications required while still maintaining the aesthetics of city landscaping, implementing smart irrigation controllers, low water use plantings, and replacing plant material, ground cover, wood chips, and bark, replacing plants, foliage, and trees with low water use options, or the implementation of hardscape when deemed appropriate, implementing turf removal projects to reduce the amount of high-water use landscaping. I'm sure you have noted that around the Civic Center, we've recently completed another turf removal project, and I think it came out real nice. A Resilient to Establish the FY 24-25 Assessments for Simi Valley Landscape District Number 1, a map of the landscape zones, the engineer's report, and a summary of the proposed assessments by zone are included in this evening's staff report. It is recommended at the close of the public hearing, City Council approved the FY 24-25 assessments for Landscape District Number 1, which will remain the same at the for Landscape District Number One, which will remain the same at their current levels. That concludes our staff report and we're available for questions.
Do you have any questions for staff? Councilmember Littler.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fujiwaki. Help me understand, the very last page of our, of our report is the actual assessment summary. And it's my understanding that if it's a fallback lot, we don't have the responsibility, the HOAs etc. do. Otherwise, we are taking care of it. So I'm noticing in, that there are, sometimes there is a proposed assessment per lot, yet it's considered a fallback lot. Why is that? Is it, are we, like, for instance, item, Zone 7, proposed assessment per lot is $51, yet it's considered a fallback zone.
Zone.
Is that just in case? Am I?
I.
I'm just trying to understand.
I'm not reading, I'm not reading the table in the same way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, no, I see, I was looking straight across. Never mind. This is my, thank you, DeeDee. Never mind, you're good. You're off the hook. Okay. I was, I, okay, and that, never mind, we're good. It's okay. So there's not, if it's a fallback, there's no assessment? Otherwise, there is.
That's correct.
Fair enough. Now I understand. Actually, let me take you then just a couple more simpler questions. I know that there's a, we're trying to change or take out turf, etc. Trying, you've managed to minimize. Although sometimes, like in the rainy season, you have weeds and all sorts of things that grow up in the middle of that removed ground coverage. Does it always take care of weed abatement, weed coverage? I, I mean, how is that just always factored part of it if we remove the turf? I guess my concern is, I've seen a few areas that look a little weedy.
It would be part of the contract that the contractor do weeding and other maintenance tasks. If you have a particular area, just let us know and we'll go double check it. And, but.
I just had someone send me some pictures, so I'll forward them to you.
Okay.
I think one of the issues maybe is that they're not on all the zones every week, every month. So by time they get to a zone, it may, the weeds may have established. So there's a little bit, little bit more work to do if it's a later zone and the weeds have time to grow.
Got it. Okay. But so if someone is seeing something that they think needs to be taken care of, you probably don't want a personal phone call. Generally, what is the right method of reporting?
Actually, the citizens have been very good about using the Public Works website. We have something called a Maintenance Service Request. And they can input the location, any kind of problem they have, potter, landscaping, tree trimming, graffiti, etc. And it comes to us and we distribute it out to the appropriate crews and get it taken care of.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're doing, you almost work on reducing costs, but the cost of doing business is going up.
Yes.
Is our overall cost of maintaining these districts going down?
The overall cost? Um, I don't.
Well, I can tell you since 2019, we've cut, their crews have cut the cost in half.
In half.
Yeah. But it's, we can't keep up with the water increase, the cost of water. And now we know cost of water is going to go up again next year with the increase from, from Metropolitan, which is going to be passed on through Kiowa. So it's, the more we do, it seems like it's two steps forward, one step back. And we just keep trying to stay ahead.
I know it's a can of worms, but at a certain point, diving into the general fund to offset the increased costs is something we're going to have to look at, consider.
That, that's looked at every year very closely. And we have reduced it. It used to be well over a million dollars and it's down to about 500,000 right now.
Excellent. Thank you for that hard work. And the spaces, especially right here around the civic plaza, is beautiful.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I will, and I will say too, that people really value the appearance of the city and the, and all of the landscaping that is done. So it's important, important responsibility. So thank you.
I was glad to see that go down because I remember when I first got on the council, I asked about all the assessments and such, landscaping districts. So to see it drop down to that is, you guys have done a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the hearing for anyone in the council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public testimony for this item.
And the hearing is now closed. Any further comments? We'll now entertain a motion.
Happy to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-26, approving the fiscal year 2024-25 assessments for Simi Valley Landscape District Number One.
Second.
Go for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I am recusing myself for the next item, 5B.
Mr. Mayor, next item, Public Hearing 5B. A public hearing to consider a request from Adrian Stern for a zone change Z-S-2022-0005, specific plan amendment SP-S-2023-002, planned development permit PD-S-2022-0015, affordable housing agreement AHA 2023-0001, and loan agreement to change the zoning designation from commercial office arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan COSP to residential very high density RVH. Modify the arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan and construct a 66-unit, four-story multifamily residential building with five affordable units in exchange for density bonus and, in exchange for density bonus and development incentives located at 1575 Arranger Road, a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approval of a supplemental budget request, introduction of ordinances, and adoption of resolutions. The reading of the ordinances and resolutions are as follows. Ordinance Number 1357, an ordinance of the City of Simi Valley approving a change of zone classification Z-S-2022-0005 to change the zone of a 0.19, 0.19 acre property from commercial office arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan COSP to residential very high density RVH at 1575 Arranger Road, and a determination that the amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Ordinance Number 1358, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving an amendment to the arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan SP-S-2023-0002 to remove the project's site from the specific plan boundary at 1575 Arranger Road and related revisions, and a determination that the amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Resolution Number 2024-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving a planned development PD-S-2022-0015 for the construction of a new 66-unit multifamily residential building, inclusion of affordable housing units, development concession and development waivers, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And Resolution Number 2024-28, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving an affordable housing agreement AHA 2023-0001, a loan agreement, and a supplemental budget request with applicant Adrian Stern for the development of a 66-unit multifamily residential building inclusive of an affordable housing set aside of five units, the Ridge Apartments for the property located at 1575 Arranger Road. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson, Senior Planner Elizabeth Richardson, and Associate Planner Eric Shen are here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report on council? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Councilmembers. Tonight's project is the fourth housing project in the Patricia Avenue-Haywood Street area by, being proposed by tonight's applicant, which if approved, would add 66 new multifamily units and include five affordable units to help meet the city's housing needs. As a partnership, the city is offering housing funds to offset project costs. And under a separate action later tonight, the City Council will consider transferring a small city-owned surplus lot to the development to create a more efficient project design and increase project affordability. In total, the four projects built and under development by the applicant include approximately 276 units, including 19 affordable units that qualify for the city's regional housing needs allocation. As a reminder, tonight's project's site at Arranger and Haywood is identified in the city's adopted housing element as a site to be, to be developed with higher density multifamily units needed to accommodate future growth in the city. Our senior planner, Elizabeth Richardson, has tonight's presentation.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. The project tonight consists of a zone change, specific plan amendment, planned development permit, affordable housing agreement, loan agreement, and supplemental budget request. The planned development permit is for a new 66-unit multifamily residential building. The zone change will change the zone of the 0.19 acre city-owned property from commercial office to residential very high density. The specific plan amendment will remove the city-owned property from the arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan. The affordable housing agreement is necessary for the five affordable units set aside for low and very low-income qualified renters, and the request for concessions and waivers. The loan agreement and supplemental budget request are to help create affordable housing opportunities in the community and concurrently relieve the city's successor housing agency of its excess surplus condition. The project is located on Arranger Road, near the intersection of Arranger Road and Haywood Street. Surrounding uses include commercial office building to the north, the Churchill Apartment Project to the west, Arranger Road and condominiums beyond to the east, and the arroyo Simi to the south. The site is generally vacant with some remaining driveway and asphalt from the previous development that has since been demolished. The site is also within walking distance of shopping centers, transit, and the Rancho Simi Community Park, all of which are amenities for residential development. The total project area is 4.76 acres. And previously, the 91-unit Churchill Apartment Project was approved on the 3.11 acre portion shown on this exhibit in yellow. The Ridge Apartment Project we are reviewing tonight is on the 1.46 acre portion shown in green and the 0.19 acre city-owned property shown on the exhibit in red. The land transfer will be considered later on tonight. And in the future, a lot line adjustment will be required to create two legal lots in order for the Ridge Development to be constructed. This is a view of the site as seen from Arranger Road looking west. And to the right in this photo is the two-story office building and the arroyo Simi would be to the left. The site will be developed with a new 66-unit apartment building. The building will be four stories and approximately 89,612 square feet in size. The units will be a mix of one and two bedrooms, which will range in size between 800 and 1,255 square feet. Five of, five of the units will be affordable at the low and very low-income category. The site is designed with the building in the middle and parking on all four sides. Parking will include secured surface and tuck-under building parking for tenants on the northwest and south sides of the site, and surface parking for guests outside of the secured gate. An interior courtyard provides open space for the residents and includes amenities such as a hot tub and outdoor kitchen with a lounge area and a fireplace. Additional amenities will include a media room, community room, fitness center, workspace, and common area. The building is designed as a modern contemporary architectural design with stucco and fiber cement composite siding, flat roofs, metal awnings, vinyl windows, and metal railings. The building massing is modulated with horizontal and vertical articulation by varying the parapet heights and furring out portions of the walls above the first floor. Two large balconies and a projecting main entrance, main entrance further enhance the east elevation facing Arranger Road. The building is rectangular in shape with units facing out on all four sides. Again, parking is provided in surface, in surface and tuck-under building parking on the north, south, and west sides of the building, which you can see here on this elevation. The building has a first-floor base finished in two-color stucco and the second, third, and fourth stories use a variety of materials including stucco, fiber cement composite lap siding, and mini V-beam metal siding. The front entry to the building faces Arranger Road and is defined with fiber cement composite siding with upper-story balconies and is accentuated with a projecting first-story building entry. To facilitate, to facilitate the development of the proposed apartment project, the developers requested the city transfer a 0.19 acre city-owned property outlined here in red to the project site. Once the city-owned property is acquired, the applicant will record a lot line adjustment to separate the site from the previously approved Churchill Apartment Site to the west. Obtaining the city-owned property will improve both site circulation with vehicle entrances at both the north and south ends of the property along with additional outdoor amenities such as a dog park and bocce ball court. Under the proposed land transaction with the city, the applicant will provide two additional affordable housing units to be added to the three affordable housing units needed to qualify for the project's density bonus concessions and waivers. To accommodate the proposed residential development, a zone change is required for the city-owned property. The primary parcel is zone commercial very high density, residential very high density, while the 0.19 acre city-owned property is zone commercial office. The 4.57 acre property was identified in the Housing Element Site Inventory as an opportunity site for infill development that would accommodate lower-income household units and was rezoned to residential very high density in 2021. The zone change will make the zoning on this 0.19 acre property consistent with the rest of the project site. The city-owned property outlined here in red is located with the bound, within the boundaries of the arroyo Simi Greenway Specific Plan. The site is currently undeveloped, but designated as a rest area along the trail, with benches, trash cans, and low rock walls. Removing the city-owned property and proposed improvements will not significantly alter the trail at this location. The Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District is in concurrence that the rest area improvements in this location are not necessary and can be removed from the specific plan. The applicant is providing five affordable housing units for low and very low-income qualified renters. This qualifies the project for a 20% density bonus increase, modified parking requirements, one concession, and unlimited waivers, as long as the waivers do not impose a life or safety hazard. In general, denial of a concession or waiver requires findings that it would have a specific adverse effect on the health, safety, or physical environment for which there is no mitigation or that it is not required because it would not preclude construction of the project. The applicant has requested a 13% density bonus, one concession, and five waivers. The base density for the project is 58 dwelling units. By providing three affordable units, the project is eligible for a 20% density bonus, which is an increase of 12 units for a total of 70 allowed units for the site. However, the applicant has requested only a 13% density bonus or an increase of eight dwelling units. The two additional affordable housing units will be, will be provided as part of the land transfer. The project is eligible for one concession. The requested concession is to increase the number of stories from three to four. Without the density bonus, a three-story building could be constructed on the site. And staff is in support of the concession since the second to fourth floor massing is setback 40 feet 6 inches from the property line, which is an additional 20 feet 6 inches from the required 20-foot base front yard setback. General, also, General Plan Land Use Policy 3.5 encourages structures taller than two stories to be restricted to very high-density residential uses or located in major commercial or industrial areas. And the project is in a very high-density residential, the project is in a very high-density zone and is also located within a major commercial area. Additionally, the project is, is oriented on Arranger Road, which is a secondary arterial roadway with a wider street width, both of which make the additional story enassing appropriate for this location. The five requested waivers include increased building height. The five requested waivers include increased building height, decreased front yard setback, reduced number of optional standards, increased walking distance to the trash enclosure, and increased walking distance to the parking spaces. The first two waivers will increase the maximum building height and reduce the front yard setback. Both waivers are relevant to the building height enassing. The waiver to increase the building height will increase the height from forty feet to fifty-five feet. While the second waiver will reduce the front yard setback is for the portion of the building over fifteen feet in height from fifty-eight feet to forty feet six inches. The red triangle delineates the small portion of the building that does not comply with the required front yard setback. Staff is in support of both of these waivers as the second to fourth floor portion of the building is generally meets all of the required setbacks, and the building height enassing is oriented on Arranger Road and is setback forty feet from the property line. Again, Arranger is designated as a secondary arterial arterial roadway with a wider street width, which minimizes the building massing as viewed from the public right-of-way, which is appropriate for this location. The third waiver request is to decrease the required number of optional standards from seven to six. Staff is in support of this waiver since the project will still provide optional standards, including being an infill project, provide security devices such as ring doorbells, alternative roofing materials to asphalt shingles, providing recreation components, including the bocce ball court and outdoor kitchen, and having larger one and two-bedroom units that are over eight hundred square feet and one thousand square feet in size. The fourth waiver for walking distance to the trash enclosure would increase the required maximum distance of two hundred and fifty feet for a resident to access trash receptacles as are measured from their individual front doors. Staff is in support of this waiver because the project will still maintain a two-hundred and fifty-foot distance to each trash enclosure as measured from the entrances to the buildings. The fifth waiver for walking distance to tenant parking spaces would reduce the maximum required distance of two hundred feet from the resident's front door to the parking spaces. Staff is in support of this waiver since the project provides the required number of parking spaces and meets ADA accessibility requirements. On May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee reviewed the proposal and recommended the City Council to approve an affordable housing agreement, a loan agreement with the developer, and a supplemental budget request in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the successor housing agency fund. The following information was presented to the Subcommittee for their consideration. By invoking the density bonus law, the project is entitled to a density bonus increase with concessions and waivers, and in return, the developer must enter into an agreement with the city to set up to set aside a specified number of affordable housing units as prescribed by state law. The Affordable Housing Agreement will de-restrict the five affordable units over a fifty-five-year term. The components of the affordability areas follows. Three units are to be set aside at the very low-income category in exchange for a thirteen percent density bonus. Two additional units, one at lower income and another at very low-income categories, to be set aside in exchange for the point-one-nine acre city-owned property. And finally, write down the tenant rents for one very low-income unit to the extremely low-income level, and allow all five affordable units to be floating with bedroom mix adjust with the bedroom mix adjustable according to each household size in exchange for a gap financing assistance, also known as the bridge loan, from the city's successor housing agency fund. As the City Council may recall from the annual successor housing agency report, excess excess surplus are unencumbered funds from the recent revenue and expenditure expenditure activities. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the agency's excess surplus required to be spent and or committed by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four was one million three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. The agency's expenditures are limited to the development of affordable housing rental units, administrative costs of monitoring the agency assets, and homeless prevention. Funds not committed by the expenditure deadline are required to be returned to the state, and therefore, seeking opportunities to increase the number of affordable units in the community throughout proposed residential developments ensures the funding assists our community and furthers the city's arena efforts. The applicant agreed to provide greater affordability with the bridge loan, which will assist with project construction. Another item on tonight's agenda, the Churchill Apartment Project, also includes a loan request of the former redevelopment funds. Collectively, these two loans will prevent any funds from being returned to the state. According to the applicant, the estimated project cost for the ridge is twenty-five million dollars. Based on the current market conditions and HUD income and rent limits adjusted for Ventura County, writing down rents for one unit to thirty percent of AMI would create a deficit of approximately five point four million dollars in rents collected over a term of fifty-five years, and writing down rents for all five proposed affordable units will create a deficit of approximately seventeen point two million dollars. It is rare for a non-permanent supportive housing development to include any thirty percent of AMI units. This bridge loan is necessary to help maintain the balance of affordability and to allow the developer to keep pace with its ongoing operating costs. The project site is listed is listed in the city's General Plan Housing Element Site Inventory, dedicated for multifamily housing development, which is which is within walking distance to shopping and services. With construction of the project as proposed, the units would qualify for one allocation in the extremely low-income category, three arena allocations in the very low-income category, and one allocation in the lower-income category, and the remaining sixty-one units would allocate towards the moderate-income category as the project is located within the low-to-moderate income area as determined by the Census Bureau. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA as a Class Thirty-two infill development project and is exempt from additional environmental review. To be eligible for a Class Thirty-two exemption, the site must be less than five acres in size, surrounded by other urban uses, as well as having no value as habitat for threatened or endangered species. The project can also not result in significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality, and it must be served by all utilities and public services. And staff recommends the City Council introduce ordinance number thirteen fifty-seven, approving the zone change, introduce ordinance number thirteen fifty-eight, approving the specific plan amendment, adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-seven, approving the plan development permit, and adopt a resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-eight, approving the affordable housing agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Well, Mayor Tim Rhodes.
I don't have any direct questions, but I was, I'm glad that I had the opportunity on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee to hear this, and your explanation is exactly as it was then, and no surprises, so I look forward to supporting this.
Councilmember Lister.
So I do have a handful of questions. I just wanted to give Mayor Rhodes the opportunity to go first. First of all, what else in this area is four stories? On Haywood, on Patricia, on Arranger, what else is four stories currently?
Councilmember Lister, the approved Churchill Project, which is not under construction yet, was approved at four stories.
But was not, it was approved at four stories, but is it, is it, it's going to be four stories? Or is that?
Portion of it's going to be four stories.
Correct. Okay. And it is ninety-one units over three acres, three point seven acres, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so these are just larger units, likely, okay. What is the elevation? I drove there, I walked it today, I, this is my district, I've had lots of conversations with people about it, and so I, anyway, so I, this morning, I parked, walked the whole area, and to me, the elevation from the Arroyo is sizable. So if you, has there been any study, if you build, take it at ground level, viewing it from the Arroyo, my concern is it's going to look five, six stories, because there's such already an elevation change from the from the dirt itself to where the Arroyo pathway is. And I'm just wondering, has there been some kind of a, is it in the report, the distance in elevation or whatever that's called?
I don't know if we have the elevation of the, I'm assuming you have the bike path.
I'm talking about the bike path versus where their actual ground level starts.
But you want to, the, I believe the path is is somewhat, and the applicant may know, is somewhat below the finished floor or parking lot area of this, but you have to take into consideration the setback of the building from the Arroyo is going to make it not look as tall as if the, if it was sitting right against the Arroyo. So there is, it is, I don't know, I don't know if staff has that distance from the the Arroyo to the building, but I would roughly guess that's got to be about seventy-five feet. So nevertheless, it is that distance, so you don't have that that mass in front of you.
Let me understand better about this land, this land area that we currently own, that is slated to be a lovely place that the entire community can enjoy and hasn't been built yet, it's looking pretty, but the general plan has it that that was going to be part of of the of the Arroyo, of the Greenbelt, and I understand the parks have said it's not critical, because obviously you have the lovely park on the other side. But I guess my question is, I'm seeing what this gives you, I guess it gives you, I guess what I'm wondering is why the all of the land needs to be given to this property? I understand driveway, so maybe give them a little corner of it. They pick up maybe four, parking five, maybe six spaces. What we get is a dog park that's fenced off and bocce ball. And I guess what I'm wondering is, to me, that area is still being used by the entire community and not being fenced off is as valuable to the residents there as it is to to the full community. And so I'm trying to understand how necessary that piece in its entirety is to this project.
I think that's probably a question for the applicant.
Okay, fair enough, fair, fair, fair enough. Okay, and I, my next, my final question, and you can see I've been laying up nights thinking about this project, so we'll see where I go with my vote, but the neighborhood council, when you came and presented there, voted, actually, their motion was to oppose this development, which is unusual, it wasn't, let's vote for it and see what the vote is, it was the motion that they came in, it was to vote, what was to oppose it, and then I think the vote was seven to two and and one, anyway, I don't want to misrepresent the vote. But my question is, after that vote, did the applicant change the change or do some things to to appease the concerns of the neighborhood council?
I believe the the applicant may want to respond to that.
Okay, so I'm just, okay, so it was in your report, I just, fair enough, well, then I will stop my questions for now. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you for letting me ask those.
Any other questions of staff? At this time, I'd like to open the hearing for anyone in the council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Ray, do we do public testimony on this item? Michael Shaw?
You want to I want to refer to the applicant to have his presentation first.
Yeah.
Chris Ituli.
Chris Ituli?
Our project tonight, I wanted to start first by thanking Brian for all his years of dedication and service to our community. Brian's always there, phone call away. We've been working in this community in this stretch of Patricia and Haywood for seven years. Things come up, we developed during COVID one of our projects, and Brian always helped us out, so I just want to thank you tonight. We really enjoyed working over the last seven years with all the community stakeholders, neighborhood council members, city planning staff, public work staff, and the entire city Simi Valley team on our various developments in this time period. We know that this new project, The Ridge, will be a beautiful addition to this community and help satisfy the need for mixed-income housing. Oh, thank you. I wanted to share two projects we have completed, which we know have added value not only economically to the city, but we're confident these projects really help transition this corridor. The first project on the left was our first project we built, we started in two thousand and seventeen, and it was completed in two thousand and nineteen. Patricia Park, sixty-five units on an underutilized two-point-two acre site that we believe turned into a five-star mixed-income housing community and has thrived since that time. The building on the right is our second project that we started in June of two thousand and twenty, right after COVID, built through COVID. It was also a long vacant parcel, underutilized, that we developed in the Class A housing. Both properties are a hundred percent occupied, have a waiting list, and they've been tremendously successful for our team. We know from a development standpoint, making these investments in this community helps grow the housing stock and really helps improve the economic base for the city. I'm born and raised in the Cano Valley, live ten minutes from these properties, so I'm proud that we've developed and we continue to develop in this area. Next slide. This slide shows the Churchill Apartments, which we hope to start construction on this summer. Before we go any further, on the Churchill, I want to touch briefly on another issue, and it's the housing shortage in our state, in our region, but specifically in the city of Simi Valley. The community is in need of infill development for residential property that provides a safe, clean apartment home with all the benefits of new construction. The Patricia Corridor is a phenomenal place to provide these housing options for a variety of income levels. As Elizabeth mentioned, we have market rate apartments, but it goes down to the variety of income levels. Our team believes this project, the Churchill, and the project we're presenting tonight, The Ridge, will continue to be a catalyst for this area and really serve the diverse needs of the city. Given our location and design elements, we know that this development will really help serve our population and grow the economic base in this corridor for years to come. Next slide. This slide shows the location of the property. There is a tremendous need, and we've seen it over the past seven years, for mixed-income communities in this location of Simi Valley. The Ridge will help meet that need and will do so in a meaningful way. The Ridge will have various income levels, which I mentioned, for market rate, low-income, very-low income, and extremely extremely low income across its apartment homes. The project will create a social impact for the community by providing a safe, healthy environment for residents to help grow and prosper. Next slide. This slide kind of shows our development activity. We're a private development company. Some of the benefits that our housing developments have provided this community over the seven, the past seven years, including The Ridge, will be, we've invested a hundred million dollars in this corridor, Patricia, Haywood, private, private money, provided two hundred and seventy-six apartment rental homes serving various housing needs, created social effects by cleaning up this corridor with new development, and provided Simi Valley's more youthful population a place to live that is not only new, but also serves to keep this population in the city and some of the amenities, with some of the amenities we offer at our properties. Next slide. This slide shows what The Ridge and The Churchill and the construction activities that will be taking place will do, not only during the period of construction, but after. We're, we're a local-based company, many of our subcontractors are locally based. This will provide high-paying jobs. Revenue will be created during, for the city during and post-construction, people go eat during their lunch break, there's a lot of economic benefits when you're doing construction projects. The housing will help satisfy the arena numbers in the community. Impact fees generated from this development will help pay for schools, parks, roads, and other infrastructure. Combined over the four projects, we'll have invested about four and a half million dollars in impact fees. Combined over the four projects, we'll have invested about $4.5 million in impact fees. And lastly, and most importantly to me, um, we're going to provide safety and security for all our residents, but also the neighboring residents and the people that live in our community. Thank you for your time. And I'm here for questions when appropriate.
I can answer some. So, yeah. Thank you for your presentation. I do have those questions I just asked, I think, there for you.
Okay, um, starting with.
Let me re-ask them.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, you go ahead with it.
Starting with the city parcel, um, it does a variety of things for both developments. But for this development, it provides circulation, um, for fire and parking. We, it's important to us, we don't want, um, parking filtering onto the street. So we want to have parking on-site, meeting all the codes. And then the reason why we want to include kind of that green space and control that green space is there is activity in the Patricia Corridor. And if you fence that, that area into our property, it, it provides security. Because if it's outside the gates, there's nothing we can do. But if it's inside the gates and we heavily landscape it, light it, it, it provides safety not only for our residents, but the park. So it's really a security item. Why we want that included, nothing more than security, and that's, so keeping it well lit and safe, basically, is why we want to include that section of the property in our parcel. What was your other?
So, and, okay, and, and so just so I understand quickly, so, and I, and I get the six more spots and I, I get the, the circulation for the, and so even if, I mean, and so I, I'm still trying to decide. I mean, so theoretically, if I understand you, we could, if we give you that much of the property and fence it there, you've got the parking right there, you just don't have your dog park, bocce ball, or the security, what you're arguing is the security, the lighting that you control. I guess, and, and only because I do the Green Belt all the time, biking it, et cetera. I'm all, I'm always surprised, by the way, I want to add, I, your other developments have been great. And in no way am I.
Oh, I know that.
Is this not an appreciation of what you've done there? I just want to be very clear. I'm always, I'm surprised that there's not access from the, from the apartment, from these developments with direct onto the Green Belt. Is there, and this is kind of off-topic, is there?
There is.
So explain that to me.
So we, on the other two developments, we do have controlled access. Because there are situations where people do try to get in our communities, so.
Well, I'm thinking more of the, of your wanting to get out of your community, out of the Green Belt.
And they do.
Because it's so lovely.
So, um, our entire community access is controlled by your smartphone.
Okay.
So even your front, throughout the whole property, it's treated like a campus. So if you're a resident of our community, you enter the property using your smartphone. Your apartment door is accessed through your smartphone. And then access to the Aurora is controlled through your smartphone too, in and out.
Is there, is, are you anticipating there will be someplace in either these properties where there's exit access?
On, so on these properties, from The Churchill, no. From this property, we're hoping that people will exit through, um, our driveway, which will be controlled, and then around, basically. So it won't have, these two properties, just because of the layout, won't have direct access to the Aurora.
Yep, okay, if, um, okay, if, let's just say if this one gets postponed, doesn't, whatever, does this affect building The Churchill?
It does. So we, um, we did, we could have built a larger scale development on the entire parcel. But we wanted to break it in two to make it feel like two smaller apartment buildings, boutique apartment buildings. But it is one parcel. So without the city parcel and integrating that into our other parcel, there's no way to separate the two properties, because we can no longer do the lot line adjustment. And we were planning on starting construction this summer. So this would delay housing opportunities probably by a significant amount. And there's, because we're a private company, we have to go out and get financing. All that stuff is lined up. If there's more hurdles and obstacles that are set in our way, it, things will dissipate. Momentum will fall, basically.
So let, so let me just ask you about what currently is fenced there. You drive there right now, you've got chain link fence, you've got privacy screening, um, through almost all of it.
Yeah.
The spa, is that, does that represent what all this land is? Or is there some area that is still part of your property that's not fenced?
No, that represents our, so.
So in front of The Churchill area, the area that's not fenced. That's, you're not going to develop that section that.
That is, so this was a, this was a, it's an interesting property with a lot of unique challenges. And that's why we bought this property in 2021. I think five prior developers tried to develop this property since the, the last building was razed. So, and I won't bore you with all the details, but there's a lot of hurdles and obstacles with this property. The property you're talking about in Haywood Street, this, the.
It goes around the corner and there's.
And there's a triangle there.
Yes, there's a triangle, and that's not part of this.
When Haywood, it's because Haywood didn't exist when this property was there. So Haywood came in and it broke the properties in two. And, um, it's complicated, how that all works. But we are, as part of The Churchill development, gonna do a landscaping plan and beautify that little triangular piece.
You own, but you don't own that triangle piece?
It's, it's, that's a very complicated answer, yeah.
Okay, okay. Let's go to the question about the neighborhood council, where there were a lot of concerns. Did you change anything after that presentation?
So we did change the facade. Before the building was a cream and red color. But over, um, a period with planning staff, we modified the palette to be more like the other developments we've done in the area. And then we worked on a number of other things, but more small, small scale, um, with planning staff. So things did evolve and change. Things were added, balconies were added on the front, windows, um, grew. So things did evolve and change, it's not, it wasn't static. Oh, and your other question about, um, elevation? So when you were looking at, there is a, um, there's a three-story senior living facility to the left of Churchill, and then there's an office building. The elevations on the office building in front, it's actually a much higher elevation. So we will sit down. This property is lower.
So even though right now it's appearing to be higher with.
The two-story office building in Haywood Street is actually higher than where this sits on Arranger. So that triangular piece of property on Haywood is a higher elevation than where this sits on Arranger.
Got it, okay. But what's the elevation compared to the Arroyo?
The Aurora is lower than this property, because it goes kind of like this.
It just seemed to be a pretty steep drop-off, but maybe that's my impression, okay, okay. Thank you, appreciate those responses, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, three speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
Michael Shaw.
Mayor, council, thank you for giving him a minute to, and I'll try and be brief. First, a little disclaimer, I supplied his elevator for his Patricia project. They're good developers. But it's too high and giving him $272,000 worth of land is ridiculous. We shouldn't even be considering that. The two units that they're talking about, he should be given those two units to get the land and still buy the land. It's a for-profit building. It's a for-profit enterprise. The city should not be giving away city park land. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Adrian Miller?
Thank you, mayor, council members, I have a little more to say. My name is Adrian Miller, I am resident of Simi Valley, I've lived here 27 years. I own a home here with my husband, we've raised our kids here. I own a small business in the office building immediately north at 1633 Arranger. So I know this area very well. I've had this small business for 18 years, a very successful practice. I drive this daily to go to work, to and from work. I don't live too far from this development, so I drive this frequently just to run errands and to pick up my kids from school and so forth. It's way too tall. What other four-story buildings in our town actually work? Think about it. Nobody likes that property on Tapo and Alamo. And I know you felt you had to approve that because of state law. But think about it, what is the future of our community going to look like if we continue to build these four-story apartment buildings? Point number one. Point number two, this is going to put so much traffic on Arranger that it's going to be a huge safety hazard and is not entitled to that waiver. The project on Churchill is already going to dump all that traffic onto Haywood. And from Haywood, that traffic will go to Arranger. All of the traffic from this building is going to go onto Arranger. And I'm so concerned about it because of the Arroyo, the schools in the area, people are crossing that street constantly from the Arroyo. There's people walking their dogs, their kids are riding their bikes, you all know this, you probably use the Arroyo, I do too, right? Beryl Wood is down the street, and there is a crossing guard at that crosswalk on Haywood, okay? But when kids are coming home from Arroyo, they're walking down Arranger to get on to their way to go home, right in front of this, because I see this, I work in this building next door, I see this. And I'm so worried about all the cars coming out of this property, potentially all this pedestrian traffic that will be conflicting with all of those cars. I think the council should really be more creative about thinking where we put our housing. Don't approve this zone change. Don't change the Arroyo Greenway specific plan. This is not conducive to the Arroyo Greenway, which is a gem in our city. It's a treasure, we all use it, we love it. This building is supposed to look something like Warner Center. That's the words of the developer at the planning commission meeting. We don't want to be Warner Center. We want housing for young people, absolutely, I have young adult children. But this, this is not conducive to what Simi Valley looks like or what we want it to look like. Look at the development you approved on Sycamore. All those apartment buildings and the senior community there, that is really nice. It is three stories, so it's very tall. But the building is a Mediterranean or Spanish style, the landscaping is beautiful, it's a nice setback. So I would encourage you to ask the developer to go back, if you have to put apartment buildings here, which I'm opposed to, because I don't think it's conducive to a lot of the traffic and the area is otherwise commercial, to bring it back into conform to what the rest of our beautiful city looks like. We are a big city, we think we're a small town, and that's why so many of us love it. Is because you can barely go anywhere and not see someone you know. So we do have that small town feel, we should look more alike. The other projects that they've built on Patricia, they're an eyesore. He said they're full and there's a waiting list, that's because we have a housing shortage. But think, can we be more creative? There are so many commercial areas in this town which are now becoming ghost towns. You know, unfortunately, the Macy's buildings at the mall, that's a really good example. Now we have this whole block on L.A. Avenue where we last, non-sent store, no fault of the cities. Deedee's is gone, Rite Aid is gone. The only thing anchoring that now is the Restore Store, so that's a ghost commercial center. What about on Tapo and Cochran, right? Where the Joann's is? I know, you had wanted to let apartments come in there, that's really creative. That's use of an area that could be redeveloped for apartments. But not a four-story building on this really small lot. So I'm really concerned about all of those. Thank you for hearing me for so long. I just hope you'll reconsider the size, the design, if you are going to approve this. The size and the design are not conducive to Simi Valley. I really appreciate you listening to me for so long.
Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, once again, Mayor Thomas, members of the city council. Here we go again. Another four-story, uh, four-story apartment building in Simi Valley. When does it stop? When does it stop? It's not in the nature of our city. We need to stop this sort of development in our city. It's not in line with the, with the way our city's been built. And, uh, and frankly, the last speaker was right. This could have been designed a whole lot better. This could have been done in a Mediterranean style that would have looked a lot more like our city. Why are we giving away city land at no cost? That's just ridiculous. There is absolutely no reason for our city to be giving away a piece of land for nothing, with the exception of a couple of units of affordable housing. Don't get me wrong, we need the affordable units. But we should be charging, we should, if we're going to sell the, if we're going to, if we're going to give the developer this piece of land, there should be a price tag attached to it. You know, the city's got other financial challenges. And we've got unpaid pension obligations. That money could be used for that. We shouldn't just be giving away city assets in exchange for a couple of units of, of affordable housing. It just doesn't make any sense. I ask you to vote no on this, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Does the applicant deserve a rebuttal to any of those comments? All right, the hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from city council members? Mr. Pachom Rhodes?
And this question is not for the applicant, but for city manager. I understand there's some logistics involved if we wanted to sell this land to this particular applicant or anybody else. Are there, are there issues with sale of city property?
Yes, uh, well, this, this piece of property, this particular piece of property is, would be, is exempt from the Surplus Land Act, because it's so small. However, uh, as the, um, the appraisal pointed out, it really doesn't have a lot of development potential because of the size and the irregular shape.
So Photomat wouldn't even.
It would be tough, but you'd have to have circulation, which it doesn't have.
So other than being used for that, that, um, uh, piece of reprieve from the Arroyo, it doesn't have any actual value.
Not really.
To, to the city.
Correct.
And so getting some value from that piece of property in the way of a concession for affordable seems like, for that particular piece of property, and I'm not disagreeing with anybody that spoke about, um, giving land away, um, that seems like a reasonable concession. And then, um, I, I know that we're, it probably just needs to be said that, um, our ability to say no on a lot of these things is restricted by the state. And we happen to have a partner that is, um, uh, in my opinion, and what I've seen so far, being responsive to the city and helping us, um, put together a design and a plan that, um, works financially to actually build, but, um, tries to be, uh, a good neighbor in fitting in and supplying us with the housing that we need. So it is a conundrum, um, I hate four-story buildings. But four-story buildings, until we change Sacramento, are going to be reality if we're giving density bonuses. I also wanted to point out in the slide. to point out in the slide that on the density bonus, in terms of the additional traffic that might be there, not all the bonus was taken. And also, not all the parking bonuses were taken, that they're supplying parking on-site. So of the things that would be truly, truly detrimental to the quality of life in that surrounding area, at least they are acknowledging and addressing them, which is more than the Tappo-Alamo developers gave us. And so for that, I'm appreciative. Not the greatest solution for housing in our city, and I agree with that, but at least it has been a cooperative process.
Councilmember Lister, before I go to you, I need to backtrack here a little bit. I did not give staff an opportunity to respond to the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Responding to some of the comments made by the public tonight, the traffic study was performed on the site, and the site has been cleared as far as not having any significant traffic impact. Level Service A still remains per the traffic study with both Churchill and the Ridge projects. As far as the zoning, the property is on residential very high density. The city-owned property is currently on commercial office. Essentially, the rezone is a cleanup measure as far as that little triangle piece. When we rezoned the bulk of the site to very high density, we omitted the city-owned property for technical reason with the housing element. But the whole vision is, is to clean up that CO zoning at some point. So that would be addressed by the City Council at some point. In this case, it's being addressed with the adjacent project. The property is also under our housing element provision, which means that the three-story height limit is in place. However, with the density bonus, you could exceed that to four stories. And in fact, our housing element does require us to rezone our text to allow four-story units in the RVH zone at some point. So that housing element has to be accomplished to actually increase up to four stories by right. So this, this will get us there with the density bonus. The other thing to point out is that there's something called no net loss. Even though this project is proposing 66 units, the zoning on the site requires more units to max out the residential high density per the state housing element. And if we don't meet that minimum requirement, we have to provide those units somewhere else. So putting this project in place definitely achieve getting the site developed. And I think it could create a balance of the 66 units. It's not everything we need, but it's a good chunk of it. So that's, that's a benefit to this project. As far as the Arroyo-Simmy Greenway, we've worked with the Park District, had verbal conversations with them about omitting that from the Arroyo-Simmy Greenway specific plan. The staff at the Park District identified that that piece was not needed to be developed as part of the Arroyo-Simmy Greenway. They have other locations on the south side of the Arroyo and that surrounding area. So the Park District concurred that the small area could be removed from the specific plan boundary. That's why we proceeded with that fashion. Regarding the grade separation from the property line of butting the physical Arroyo-Simmy, which is probably the trail and the little offshoot there, there's about a six-to-eight-foot drop-off in grade between the finished floor of the building downward to the road. It is, goes downward, it becomes a flood area down below. But there is, like councilperson lists or say, a little bit of a drop-off. It's roughly six to eight feet, but it is, you know, 60 to 80 feet or more based on the angle of the site plan away from the building. Did I miss anything else? And our Director, Mr. Peres, has a couple more items.
Thank you, Sean, and Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make sure we clarified a couple of issues. This .19 acre parcel, for all the reasons identified, makes more sense to be attached with this project, but also makes sense from the city budget perspective and our housing element. The city budget, we don't have enough money to pay for all the landscape maintenance districts we already have throughout the city. And so what, Mr. Itulie identified the security aspects, but it's also, the site has been blighted and unmaintained for all these years. We know the Park District doesn't want to use it. And it's a good way to unencumber the city from sort of these remnant parcels and put it to higher and better use. This property, as it sits today, and Mr. Itulie's team makes this look, look so easy. This is their fourth project in seven years. And if it wasn't for his team doing this, these types of housing development in the city, I don't know if we would have very many housing units to show in our recent RENA numbers. And I just wanted to underscore the difficulty of this site. This is, one of the properties located along the Arroyo. It has poor soils. It has to have a lot of engineering done for it. And so sometimes this extra density helps pay for the project, just to get that parking lot, that foundation, all the work done to support a building on it. Having that extra row of housing, if you will, on the fourth story, is very affordable once you've done all the site improvements to do it. So it, the property tax basis from the city budget perspective, perspective from this property is generating nothing for us. This sort of development helps our city budget from the property tax, puts the site into efficient use. And for the community, I want them to understand, we are not willy-nilly putting RVH housing everywhere in the city. We are very surgical about it. We chose this location because it's on an arterial street, near shopping, near transit, near parks and services. And what better place to put high-density residential housing in this sort of Goldilocks zone? And the commercial development community did not want to put a commercial building here because of the site development challenges. It wouldn't pencil out, but housing makes perfect sense. And so I wanted to allay the community's concerns. We don't put four-building, story buildings here, very tall buildings. We want to preserve our hillsides, but we need to focus our growth and intense development on the valley floor, along arterial streets, near transit, near shopping. That's where we build. And if we do it here, we don't have to lose the town center with housing proposals. We call them in. But the creeping pressures to put residential uses in our commercial zones, this is the right project in the right area. So I just wanted to underscore that and make those connecting points. But again, these properties and a lot of the other ones on the, on the Patricia and Haywood Street that aren't developed, aren't being developed for a reason. The high interest rates, the high construction costs, the labor shortage, the supply chain issues, it's all the issues that compounding our housing crisis. But this project makes sense, and they're willing to build it.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. Just a question for staff first, before I make a statement. If, let's just say we, it's a tied vote here, it's a no vote, for instance, if. And I want, I want to be very clear that I do think apartments, I do think housing needs to be built here in some fashion, and I do think it's good development intention. I just have some concerns. So I guess my question is, if, and I don't know that that's where the voting is going at all, but it's a curiosity. If the vote were no on this, for instance, does that stop it, or does it just say, please revisit these issues? How, what does, what does that look like?
So the, first of all, if there was a straw vote, I would possibly recommend a continuance to have the applicant come back and work with some changes. As far as a no vote goes...
True politician, straw vote. That was, keep going. I'm sorry.
If there were a tie vote or a no vote, there would be concerns with compliance with state law and our housing element. Also, you know, one, one thing you should remember is that if there's, something different could come, come along, which is more intensive based on housing laws. So even with the applicant, if the applicant were to sell this project, another developer could come in and build additional units. They could erase that project and come back and do something even more intensive, more taller, higher density. In this case, our affordable housing agreement includes a provision with the land sale, which requires this developer to build this project. And if they go back on it, the triangle piece would come back to the city. It would revert. And the city attorney, Mr. Gabler, could elaborate on that component. But I'll refer, refer to them as far as the details of the clawback agreement.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Brian?
No, I was just saying, simply if the developer does not build this project, then the, the city would get its land back.
Got it.
Councilmember Judge. Oh.
Well, are you, I was just going to maybe make a comment, and then I'm, and then I'm done. No, I was just going to say, I very much appreciate the development you've done in that community, and I will, and I've driven it many times. I live near there. And so I want to be, I do think in over in balance, very positive. And I'm, and very supportive of Churchill. It's just a little, my concern right now is the ridge, to me, seems very, I'm just concerned about the massing and very rectangular looking, and I'm concerned, I'm concerned that, that, that what I've received from neighborhood, from the neighborhood council, many comments, I've yet to hear anyone really be supportive of it. I understand we need housing. There's no question. And I absolutely want housing there. I want at least three stories of good housing. And actually, you've convinced me that it, that that land should be yours, actually. Through this discussion, I can see, and having seen what it looks like right now, that little piece of land that we've not done anything with is pretty pathetic looking, I'll be honest. I don't think we, people really know the city owns it, so that's kind of nice. But that being said, so I guess I'm convinced. I understand that that, I feel it should be yours, et cetera. But right now, I'm sitting on the fence. My concern against is the massing, the size and the appearance. Four stories just from Arroyo will, anyway, I'm, those are my concerns. And so we'll see where it goes. But those are my comments.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Sean, you were being diplomatic in, in saying, what is the concern that's really on my mind? And, and that is, I think we can all, all agree that Tappo and Alamo will haunt this city forever. And then any elected official, it will haunt forever because they blame us. And the fact of the matter is, that was a developer that said, I'm going to do what I want anyway because I have the law on my side. And what you were delicately not saying was that if he sold this project to someone else, we could end up with a Tappo-Alamo and not be able to do anything about it. And we could end up with far worse at that location. They could take all of the high-density giveaways, bonuses, and, and we, and we ended up, we end up with, you know, 90 units of, and it right, built right out to the street instead of having a setback. And it could be five stories because that's actually allowed in that, that atrocity. So a developer that's willing to work with us, that is actually designing something that sits back from the street, is giving us housing that we need. And just for that record, I'm working on SCAG, on the Community Economic and Human Development Committee that works on the RENA numbers. And I'll be sitting in that chair position, trying to do what we can to fix this silly problem that, that, that plagues us. But the battle is to be fought there, not, unfortunately, with this developer. And so thank you for being a responsible developer on this. I would hate to get stuck with something even worse down the line.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nobody sitting in the audience or watching this at home has, can argue with my, my position on multifamily housing in this city. I am not a fan. And that is nothing derogatory towards your construction company, the way you built your apartments on Patricia, because they are needed. And I don't think they're that bad looking. In fact, being inside of them, everybody loves those places. I mean, I've talked, my kids have friends there. They, they love those apartments. It's not everybody's cup of tea, but Rocky said it best just a second ago. Somebody put, there was something I saw, it was either on one of the social media pages, or it was in the A Cor, or something about how the City Council allowed Tappo and Alamo to go through. That could not be further from the truth. It was denied twice. It was denied three times, actually, once by the Planning Commission and twice by the City Council. We were then taken to court by the State of California and the developer, and we lost. We lost that in court. The City Council had nothing to do with Alamo and Tappo. We tried to stop it, or at least to have the developer work with us, which they refused to do. Under the law, in the state of California, at this time, you know, for the foreseeable future, that's the way it's going to be. There is no doubt that if this developer doesn't build this development here, and somebody else gets this land, yeah, we might not give them that .1 acre piece of triangle. But they could put 100 units on this. I pointed this out a couple meetings ago, when we had the conversation with the movie studio down on Smith Road. They want to put in a parking lot, flat parking lot, trees around it, no apartments. But the people that live there don't like it because it's not a house, and it's not their house, it's not their land. But it's not what they want. But on the other hand, with the state's mentality the way we are now, to just beat your head against the wall thinking about this stuff, we do not have the ability to mold our city the way we want it to be, because I do not want to see these apartment complexes. I do not. But the alternative could be far worse. And we're seeing that already in our town. We see it at Tappo and Alamo. So it's very exacerbating to the councilmembers, especially, I sit on, like, councilmember Rhodes, and I know other councilmembers sit on other regional boards. When you sit on the SCAG board, you have counties all the way from here to San Diego, all the way to San Bernardino, all the way to the state line on Nevada and Arizona. And they're all struggling with the same problems. They are not allowed to build their cities the way their residents want. They are being told how to build their cities by bureaucratic politicians in Sacramento that don't even live in homes. Most of them like living in apartments, because that's where they're from, and that's how they grew up. They don't understand what it's like to own your own home or things like that. And they're telling us in the city of Simi Valley how we have to develop our city. And if we disagree, then the courts tell us how to develop our city. And we lose all the protections of the codes that we have. It sucks. And it's, this sounds like I'm making excuses, but really, until you've sat in those rooms with those folks from up north, you have no idea the insanity of their plan. Goes right along with all the electric cars. That's what I have to say. Other than that, I'm willing to make the motion to approve this project.
I'm going to comment real quick. Having watched the council at the time deal with that Tappo-Alamo project, and the frustration that the builder would not work with the city whatsoever to try to be at least reasonable in his plan, to build that thing all the way out to the sidewalk the way they did, just makes me appreciate that, you know, when, when someone, I understand that, you know, it needs to, it needs to pencil out for someone to be willing to invest money to build a project. When, when we find a developer that's willing to come in and work with us to do that setback and do, and be concerned. I understand that there's people that are not happy about this project. But it's really hard for us to fight a project like this when it's, you know, in my opinion, they've worked well with the city in, in putting this project together. So that's where I'm at. But if you want to, go ahead, Mike.
The hearing is now closed. Any other further comments from the City Council? I will now entertain a motion.
Actually, I want to, want to comment. I just want to make it very clear. I'm going to vote no, but I think it's going to pass, which is fine. I want to be very clear that appreciate the affordable elements in it. I appreciate the setback, and I'm not opposed in any way to the financial assistance that the city is doing to help support as far as the, as far as this, to support both projects. I'm very supportive of that, and I think I'm convinced where there's value in that being maintained beautifully. So I just want to make it clear, I'm going to vote no because of the massing and the, and the four stories. And I know that it's not what the neighborhood council wanted, and the architectural design, et cetera. But I want to be very clear on everything else. So, thank you. But I want to be very clear on everything else. So, thank you.
I will now entertain a motion.
All right. I'll move to introduce ordinance number 1357, approving zone change number Z-S-2022-0006. Adopt ordinance number 1358, approving specific plan amendment number SP-S-2023-0002. Adopt resolution number 24-27, approving planned development permit number PD-S-2022-0015. Adopt resolution number 24-2024-28, approving the Affordable Housing Agreement, AHA-2023-0001, and approve a supplemental budget request for Fund 201.
Just a quick correction. I think you said 0006 on the first zone. It's actually 0005.
I stand corrected.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The motion passes with Councilmember Lister voting now. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar. And there is one resolution for your consideration. Consent item 10, resolution number 2024-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, approving updated citywide publicly available pay schedules effective on July 1, 2024 in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5.
Move adoption of the consent calendar?
Actually, I'm sorry. I pushed my, in the queue.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Lister, please.
Actually, I'd like to pull items four and nine, but we can vote on everything else if that's...
Was that four and nine?
Four and nine, please.
Your motion? Move to approve all those other than four and nine.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, did you want me to speak to four?
Councilmember Lister?
Sorry, I just...
Let's start with four.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to pull these items just because I wanted to have a brief discussion. Item four is authorization to initiate recruitment to fill two at-will positions. And I just wanted to, anyway, this has become necessary at the departure of Linda Swan. And I just wanted to take time to express my tremendous sadness at her departure. And I wanted to make that public, that I'm sure, I'm sure everyone in the city feels that way. And so, and so I just wanted to first make that expression, that we, that she will be sorely, sorely missed. I noted that in the report, and it reminded me that when filling at-will employee, it calls for two council members to be included in that interview process. And so I know that our new city manager will be very involved in that. I realize I'm not the mayor. I'm not the mayor pro tem, but I simply wanted to volunteer. I think those two critical appointments are gonna be absolutely critical. And so I wanted to volunteer my services if you felt that was appropriate. I'm around the summer, so I just wanted to get that out there. So that, that is what I want to say about item four. And I think, and obviously, we have a lot of big gap now in our, anyway.
Do you want to go ahead and discuss number nine then, please?
Sure. So number nine is the award of professional services contract for the city of Simi Valley Bicycle Master Plan Update. I wanted to mention this just because I've had so many people reach out to me asking, "When are you gonna be doing something about the bicycle plan, et cetera?" And seeing that this was in the consent calendar made me realize this is important to a lot of people. I've even had park board members say, "I want to be part of it. When is that happening?" So I pulled it so that it could be a commentary, commented on and made aware more publicly that we are awarding or going to award this to Chen Ryan Associates. And they are going to have extensive public outreach with three community workshops, 10 community events. They're going to put together Stakeholder Advisory Committee, which will be made up of a lot of these people who've reached out to me, I hope, including, as I mentioned, a park board member. And I was going to ask the question of what the timeframe is. But I found on page 90, the very, it appears that it should be completed September 2025. Is that correct? Am I reading that report correct?
That's the outside date, yes. I mean, it certainly could get done sooner, but there's a lot of work involved. Engineering work as well as community meetings. We don't want to miss the opportunity for the community to weigh in. As you all know, they've been very interested in...
They've been really interested, and with good reason, and that's great. So the question that I also had before we take this to vote, I know Justin Link is our traffic engineer. If someone is vitally interested and wants to be considered for the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, should they reach out to him? Should they reach out to you, Brian, who will be in Oregon? Should they?
They'll reach out to me, but it's not gonna do you much good. I would suggest reaching out to the Public Works Department and certainly reach out to Justin and let him know that they're interested.
Okay. I just, okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring this to the public's consciousness. It is happening. We're putting $250,000 into making this. And I've received a grant that pays for most of it, I should say, which is wonderful.
Yes.
But this is important. So that was what I wanted to say. I'm happy to motion four and nine, if you'd like me to, unless others wanted to comment.
Go free.
Four. Four and nine, yes.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item nine A, consideration of the transfer of city-owned property APN 632-0-140-300, located on Arringer Road, north of a Royal Simi, to a developer in exchange for additional affordable housing units within a 66-unit multifamily project, PD-S-2022-0015, and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2024-30, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, California, declaring certain city-owned property as exempt surplus land pursuant to the Surplus Land Act. And city manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to recuse myself for item nine A and nine B as they are related to item five B.
Okay. So I can give an in-depth staff report, but you probably have heard most of the issues involved in this piece of property and this action thus being requested. It is, as noted, it is exempt from the Surplus Land Act because of its size, which makes it a lot easier to be able to do this transaction. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Lister?
I do have one question. Staff report, page three, it says, "If property is contiguous to land owned by county or park agency, it is not eligible to be given or traded away." This seems like it's contiguous to county-owned Arroyo. So did I misunderstand what was being stated there?
It's not, it is not open space area.
So you're saying the Arroyo is not considered open space?
It's not zoned open space.
Is it considered open space?
It's not zoned open space.
It's not considered open space.
Okay, that's fine. So what is it, so it's not considered open space, what is it, what's zoned then?
Yeah.
And that's not, interesting. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the education. Thank you.
I'd be happy to make the motion. Right ahead. I move to adopt the attached resolution number 2024-30, finding the subject property exempt surplus land pursuant to the Surplus Land Act, and approve the transfer of the property and authorize city manager to execute all documents necessary for the transfer.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Kavanaugh recused. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is nine B, adoption of a resolution approving the second amended and restated Affordable Housing Agreement, AHA-2024-0001, and approval of a loan agreement for Haywood Street Associates LLC for Churchill Apartments, located at 1850 Haywood Street. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2024-31, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, approving second amended and restated Affordable Housing Agreement, AHA-2024-0001, a loan agreement and a supplemental budget request with Haywood Street Associates LLC for the development of a 91-unit affordable apartment complex, inclusive of an affordable housing set aside of five units. The Churchill Apartments for property located at 1850 Haywood Street and Deputy Environmental Services Director Mara Mulch and Associate Planner Eric Chen are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the city council. We will be reviewing another request from the applicant Adrian Stern of the Haywood Street Associates LLC to amend an affordable housing agreement to include a loan agreement and a supplemental budget request for the Churchill Apartments located at 1850 Haywood Street. For this presentation, staff will provide a high-level overview since the request shares similar affordability and financing to the Ridge Apartment Project that was discussed earlier tonight. As the city council may recall, the successor housing agency, our encumbered excess surplus fund, must be spent and/or committed by June 30, 2024. Moving on to the project, on February 13, 2023, the city council approved Churchill Apartments Project, an 83-unit mixed-income apartment complex with five units set aside for occupancy by qualified, very-low-income household at affordable housing rent for a period of 55 years. Anticipating the budget constraints with inflation at 30-year-high, cost of construction and operating elevated, and interest rate environment still volatile, the developer returns to the city with additional requests to modify the project by increasing the total number of apartment units from 83 units to 91 units, and a bridge loan request to help finance the construction and stabilization of the project. Pardon me. On September 2023, the developer received an administrative approval for, from the city to increase the unit count. On May 30, 2024, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee recommends city council to amend the Affordable Housing Agreement to include the fifth affordable unit at the extremely low-income category in exchange for a $1 million bridge loan from the successor housing agency fund. According to the applicant, the estimated project cost for the Churchill is $35 million. Based on the current market conditions and HUD income and rent limits adjusted for Ventura County, it is estimated that the present value of writing down the tenant rent of the 30% of the AMI unit will create a deficit of approximately $5.4 million in rents collected over a term of 55 years. The applicant proposes a condensed loan repayment schedule of 18 years instead of a standard affordable housing loan with a 55-year repayment plan. The bridge loan will accrue 30, excuse me, the bridge loan will accrue 3% annual simple interest prorated at $333,000 in proceeds to the city over an 18-year term. Construction of Churchill Apartment Project as proposed, the units would qualify for four RENA allocations in the very-low-income category, one allocation in the extremely-low-income category, and remaining 86 units would allocate toward the moderate-income category as the project is located within the low-mod income area as determined by the Census Bureau. Therefore, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee recommends the city council to approve the Sid Affordable Housing Agreement Amendment, the bridge loan, and the supplemental budget request in that this proposal will incentivize the city in the form of community reinvestment and economic development. And the city will receive RENA credits from the affordable housing opportunities created with the successor housing agency's excess surplus fund and concurrently meet the agency's statutory obligations. We are available for questions.
Seeing none.
Wait, actually, I'm gonna ask a question, just, but I think we're all in favor. But just a quick question. Did I understand if we don't use these funds in this manner, we have to give them back to the state? Is that, is that too simplistic? Unless we have someone else. I mean, it's time constrained. Is that accurate?
At the start of the current fiscal year, our estimate was about 1.5. Based upon how last fiscal year ended, that fluctuated a little bit. So I can't tell you the exact number off the top of my head of where that gap is that was closed by additional expenditures from last year. But the short answer is yes. Any money from the outstanding fiscal year 2021 excess surplus, which at the start of this year was 1.38 million, would need to be returned to the state of California 90 days after the close of our fiscal year, if not committed, which by entering into the Affordable Housing Agreement and authorizing the commitment, we are considering those committed and being able to meet that requirement of June 30.
I just wanted you to say that again because we like holding on to our money and using it well. Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Judge.
I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready.
Please proceed.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-31 to approve the second amendment amended and restated Affordable Housing Agreement, AHA-2024-0001, and a loan agreement, and approve a supplemental budget request for a loan to the developer, Haywood Street Associates LLC, in the amount of $1 million from the successor housing agency fund, Fund 201.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Kavanaugh recused. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item nine C, consideration of a letter of intent to license city-owned property located at Galena Avenue, approximately 300 feet south of Cochrane Street, APN 633-0-170-105, to the southeast Ventura County YMCA. And city manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city, over the years, has been discussing this particular parcel with the YMCA on how we could jointly benefit the community. In the staff report, it provides some historical background on how we came to the property. We purchased it in May of 1989 for actually no particular reason. It was offered to us by the owner at that time, wanting to dispose of the property. So the city council elected to purchase it. At that time, it was located adjacent to our city hall and police station, actually, police station as well as the Ventura County courthouse, until the earthquake took care of the police station and the courthouse was relocated here to the Civic Center site. Looking at the proposed letter of intent, the intent behind the document is to hold the property for the YMCA and identifying certain particular uses that, in working with the YMCA, have identified that would benefit to the community. Those include a conference center, which we have discussed internally and externally about the need for additional conference space in the community, as well as meeting space for social gatherings, events, conferences, and privately, private parties. It's also providing space for medical providers to provide, I'm working with the Vendas Health, potentially Venas Health, in providing medical space for physical therapy uses as well as mental health counseling and assistance. We've discussed the using for a facility for students to catch up on their homework as well as education studies and potentially working... as well as education studies, and potentially working with the school district, and then also providing an opportunity for some housing, potentially housing at the site through use of a mixed-use building. The part, the land could also be used to support all of this, these proposed uses, good land could also be used as a parking lot and whatever landscaping and lighting that would go along with it. The YMCA is in phase two of their planning now, and they are in with our planning department on a phase-two project that would include a gym and some other uses at their site. This would end up being their phase-three, but because it takes many years to plan for facilities such as this and to facilitate fundraising, we're taking the opportunity to do this at this time to lay the groundwork for the future expansion and use of YMCA facilities in Simi Valley. So with that, I happen to answer any questions, and Mr. Stone and others with the YMCA are here if you have additional questions for the YMCA.
Councilmember Litzler.
So I first want to go on record that, that I am very pleased with the services provided by the YMCA, and from, from after-school care to swimming class exercise for the elderly. I've seen all of that about my first move to Simi Valley, that was a hub for my children, myself, anyway, and I think that they are a vital part of our community, and so I'm strong supporter of going forward with this, but I do have some questions. So the first is, page three of the report says that the Larwin Development Company basically was the one that gave, or that, as I understand the report, so, gave the, some of the property to, maybe it actually doesn't apply to this piece, the deed restriction. Does that deed restriction that basically required the property to be reverted to them, ceased to be used for public usage, does that, did that apply to this piece or just the first?
It does not apply to this piece, it applies to their current facility that they're on today.
Got it, okay, so it doesn't apply, okay, thank you, I just wanted to be, although I, one could argue that this is that usage anyway, but okay, thank you. Page nine, it states that, in the letter of intent, that obviously we're aware that currently it's being used kind of as a staging yard for sci-fi, I believe, still.
Yes.
In fact, I should add, they are on my street today as we speak. It's happening, so we're excited. But it says twelve months from the LOI becoming law, or whatever, being transmitted, that they can be asked to move. Do, now, I realize this is stage three, there's time, et cetera, but if twelve months, do we envision sci-fi being completely done with that staging area?
Well, we'd like to believe they would, however, well, we have, we haven't drafted the final license agreement, and so if we, we'll have a conversation with sci-fi and see how long exactly it's going to take them to get done. We'd like to move them along, and they do have other staging areas in the area that is not this land, so they may be able to, within, within twelve months, not, no longer use this property and using another staging area out actually on Tierra Hada.
Got it. Okay, so by signing this, we are telling them they've got twelve months, or are we just saying?
We're kind of letting them know that they need to start thinking about wrapping up.
Okay, well, I understand. Those are my two questions, thank you.
Mayor Tim Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, the rumors of naming this the Gabler Social House is not, actually, that's just a rumor.
You have to realize, this is the last action of, oh, wait, there's one more item? Oh, you're right, okay, this is, this is the second, the last action that, that City Manager Brian Gable will have, and he, will cause to happen, so there's, there's some real, something very symbolic about this, but anyway.
I'll make a motion if you'd like. I, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a letter of intent with the Southeast Ventura County YMCA regarding the potential leasing of city property.
Second. Licensing, not leasing, licensing.
Licensing of city property. Hopefully it says that. Did I, did I write it wrong?
It sounded like you said, it sounded like you said leasing, that was licensing, yes.
Okay. Then call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
And the Gabler Auditorium is on its way.
And thank you for waiting to the bitter end.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item nine D. Adoption of a resolution appointing Samantha Argabright to the position of City Manager and approving an employment agreement that establishes salary and benefits for the position of City Manager. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, appointing Samantha Argabright to the position, to the position of City Manager and approving an employment agreement establishing salary and benefits in connection with said appointment. And Senior Human Resources Analyst Jamie Cross is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The executive search firm of CPS HR Consulting was retained to assist in the city, rather, to assist the city with the recruitment and selection process for the position of City Manager, following City Manager Brian Gable's retirement announcement on January eighth, twenty twenty-four. The recruitment process resulted in a total of seventy applications being submitted. After an interview and initial screening, five candidates were invited to, sorry, invited for an interview with the City Council. Following the interview, four candidates were asked to participate in interviews with City Department Directors and a panel of retired city managers. The final step was a second interview with City Council, and Ms. Argabright was selected as the top candidate and best suited for the position. The City Council authorized Mayor Thomas to negotiate an employee agreement with Ms. Argabright. The result of these negotiations is the employment agreement, which is currently being brought before the City Council for consideration, reading on the record of the required oral report and approval. I'm available for questions.
I thought somebody had a thought about Delane's item for future negotiation. No.
I moved a resolution to keep City Manager Gable in position.
All right. Councilmember Judge.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
But before you do, I have something I need to read. In accordance with Government Code Section three-five-one-one point one, a summary of the city manager's salary and benefits is reported as follows. The annual salary for the assignment of city manager will be two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars. The city manager will also receive a monthly vehicle allowance of five-hundred dollars, and the city shall further reimburse mileage at the IRS standard mileage rate for any miles traveled outside of Ventura County for city business purposes, a term life insurance policy of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars, and reimbursement of any annual physical, up to five-hundred dollars per physical year, fiscal year. Consistent with other executive management employees of the City of Simi Valley Confidential Employees Group, the city manager is eligible for health benefits, vision, dental, life insurance, and comprehensive medical insurance. Other benefits include dependent life and disability insurance, as well as workers' compensation. Paid time off includes holidays, administrative leave, compensatory time off, and leave accruals on the same basis as other confidential executive management employees. Further benefits include tuition reimbursement, classic per member retiree benefits, tax-deferred savings plan, and retiree medical insurance. These benefits are set forth in detail in Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four attached to the staff report.
I will now, man, who was on Sam's negotiating team? He ate your lunch, you needed Gable's wife to...
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-two, appointing Samantha Argabright as City Manager effective July first, twenty twenty-four, and approving the employment agreement containing the terms and conditions in connection with said appointment. Congratulations.
Second.
Call for a vote. I think about this for a minute.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item ten A, City Council Member Reports.
We'll start with Councilmember Litzler.
Well, Brian, this is the last report, you're gonna have to listen to mine, I read. And you looked a little emotional when you were asked to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Was that just me, or it just, anyway, I just, anyway, you are going to be missed. I actually don't have too much to report this time period, but I will just share a few things. Yes, June fourth, I did attend the Youth Council Meeting, and it was a very fun pizza party. On Thursday, June sixth, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee remotely and listened to reports such as Agrihoods, Housing Developments with Agricultural Amenities, and the California Department of Food and Agriculture's Healthy Soils Initiative, which basically helps limit, anyway, talks about crop circulation, et cetera, and keeping our soils healthy. On that weekend, actually, I flew to Florida to attend the Government Finance Officers Association. Doesn't that sound like, however, I was not attending on behalf of the city, I was, I was attending on behalf of our, the company that we owned as an exhibitor, and, but it was interesting to see just the breadth of information being provided, and I know that we are in a good financial standing, and anyway, everyone else was learning all sorts of good things, but it was good to be in that environment. I then returned Tuesday, June eleventh, from Orlando for that, from that event. June twelfth, Wednesday, was my one day back in Simi Valley, and that morning, I attended the Moore Park College State of the College Advancements in twenty twenty-four event. And I will say that they really was, certainly, they made a case of all the great things that they're doing, and of course, looking for people to financially support, but I wanted to mention that Moore Park College has again been named a top-ten finalist for the twenty twenty-five Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, and that really is outstanding, keeping in mind that basically, that over a thousand community colleges throughout the, throughout the country, about a hundred and fifty are invited to apply for this prestigious award, and to be downnamed the top-ten finalist, if you, if they win, I believe it's a million-dollar grant to use, but, and what's significant is that in the twenty-three-twenty-four award cycle, they actually placed third, so it just speaks to the excellence of Moore Park College in our midst, and so, wanted to commend them, and, and it was a very lovely event. And then that next day, Thursday, June thirteenth, I got in a car and began driving back to Orlando, Florida, and so I've been to Florida twice in the last two weeks, although this, this time, I drove with my sister to attend the American Harp Society National Harp Conference, where we were selling my mother's harp music, and it just was the easiest way to get thirty boxes across the country. I just didn't have a good shipping way, and so, it was very fun to, four days be later, literally driving past the hotel I stayed at just four days before, then I drove there. Just so you know, it is a thirty-four-hour drive, if you drive it straight, it is about twenty-five-hundred miles one-way, about five-thousand miles round trip, and yes, I did it, with three-and-a-half days of exhibiting, eight days, so driving there and driving, in case you're doing the math. Anyway, we have a beautiful country that we live in, and this is the first time in my life that I've ever driven all the way across the country, and that was quite an adventure for me, but what it meant was that I missed Mr. Brian Gable's special send-off party, and my apologies for missing that. Know that I have very much appreciated our work together, all that you've done, your knowledge of this community and your love for this community is palpable, and it will really, really be missed, so those texts and phone calls may be coming, but I will definitely be missing our semi-weekly, what is that, every other week, other, whatever that is, biweekly, biweekly, that, anyway, our, your advice and your encouragement, and so, wishing you all the best, Brian, thank you for your service. And that concludes my report.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'll start off with, I did not drive clear across the country. But there's one thing, Brian can't leave until you fix it, do you know what it is in here? Get the Gorilla Glue and please, the little corner sticks out on there, it's been driving me nuts for years. He said he'd fix it, and he hasn't fixed it yet, so you can't leave.
He's got four days.
Can't leave till it's done. No, we're not, yeah, that'll take a while. You guys have to see our carpet in the back, it's got probably fifty pieces of tape on it, all the way down the hall. Yeah, very frugal.
This is management.
Yes, fiscal, yes, fiscally manageable. On Friday, June seventh, I had the opportunity to attend the Canejo Simi Moore Park Association of Realtors Annual Mayor's Roundtable. Unfortunately, our mayor couldn't make it, but it was very interesting to meet with the, the local realtors and the mayors from the local cities. Moore Park did a great job, Chris Ennigrin did a great job, but what I really found fascinating is that we had four different mayors, and they were given questions ahead of time, and one of them was on wildfire, how to avoid them in the future, what types of things are the cities doing. Thousand Oaks has something I'm really gonna look into, Bob Engler is working fire, with the Fire Council, so Bob Engler's one of their council people, and I said, you know, that's something we should be doing in Simi Valley, too, so that's gonna be my goal for the, for the rest of this year, is to do that, it, it helps mitigate fire danger and possibly insurance premiums, but eh, we're not sure. I said, I said a little, Joe, I said a little, but I just think that would be good for our, our community period, so I will be looking forward to working on that. On Friday, June fourteenth, the Simi Valley Police Foundation had their clays for canines, I did terrible, but it's always a good time, and, and Mike Judge always does very well, but it was, it's a lot of fun and a good way to help raise money for the Police Foundation. And let's see, Wednesday, June nineteenth, it saved the date for Brian Gable's retirement dinner. We actually had a really good time, there were a lot, a lot of people there, a lot of nice comments made, I don't want to get mushy, so we, we kind of said nice things there, but you will be missed, you're leaving the city in good hands with all the staff that you have in place, so I'm looking forward to, to new, new ideas, but we still need to be able to reach you because sometimes you're the only one that knows the answer to those off-the-wall questions, so, yeah, he's changing his phone number already, so, but congratulations again on your retirement, and Sarah and Karen, I know, are very happy to be, to be going, so congrats to everybody. His daughter's gonna be going to the University of Oregon, so, they're very happy about that. Saturday, on the hottest day in June so far, I attended the St. Rose Chili Cook-Off, it's always a great event, they had a really big turnout. As I was walking in, one of the city employees was leaving, I said, you're leaving so early? She goes, oh, it's really hot, and I was in there an hour, I said, okay, we're done, but it was a great turnout, the chili was good, a lot of nice people, they had music going, I think they had a great day, and hopefully they made a lot of money for their nights at Columbus. And the last thing I have is yesterday, it was my mom's eighty-third birthday, so I just want to wish her, we all went to Sutter's Mill and have a, wish her a happy, happy eighty-third year. That's it for me.
Councilmember Judge.
Mr. Mayor, on, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but on Monday, June third, prior to our council meeting on the third, I met with our Engineers Association here in City of Simi Valley, just putting that out there, that's one of our new bargaining groups. On Thursday, June sixth, I met, I was, well, actually, Wednesday, I was at SCAG's Executive Action Committee, and then Thursday, I was at the Regional Council and the Transportation Committee. Not too much new went on there, nothing, nothing really affected Simi Valley, there was some good news, though, that did come out of the meeting, was all the projects put forward by VCTC and Ventura County were fully funded. put forward by VCTC in Ventura County were fully funded by your dollars from the state and federal government. So that's good news. We had one project from Simi Valley, but there was projects all over the county, and they were all fully funded for the amounts asked, which was, that's, that's a big deal. Friday, June 7th, I attended a retirement for a waste management employee, Marilyn Gallagher, 33 years. I was happy to give her a letter of commendation from our city for her service to our community. On Monday, June 10th, I attended Council on Aging meetings. I actually had a little report to give them, so I was actually able to key them in on some stuff going around our city. Let's go down here. Friday, Friday, June 14th, I did attend the Clay's for Canines, a real pre-gun club and the Police Foundation, which raises all the money that the city cannot provide for our police department in the way of canine dogs, sometimes specialized body armor for our SWAT teams, other items like that. They raised a lot of money on that event. It's always a great event. It's well-attended, and if you ever get a chance and you like shooting trap, it's a great, it's a great fun day. Saturday, June 15th, I attended, I attended as representing the city and also the Elks Lodge in the same day, their Flag Day celebration on Saturday, June 15th. It was very well done. The Boy Scouts were there putting up all the flags. There was a big history lesson on the history of our flag. The Elks do a great job in that patriotism stuff, and it was awesome. I forgot to say, and I won't forget, my anniversary was Thursday, June 13th, so I'm going to mention that, because I think my wife's still watching, because she got a little scared when she heard my rant earlier. She said, oh, my, oh, my God, he's talking. Friday, June 14th, I, I failed to say happy birthday to the United States Army, all veterans and soldiers serving. Happy birthday. On Wednesday, June 19th, I too attended Brian Gable's retirement party. And it's very well-attended, it was a good time, a lot of stuff was said, none of it was meant. Friday, June 21st, I attended a via Zoom, the League of California Cities Policy Committee Meeting for Public Safety. There's a couple of bills coming out in November that we want to keep our eye on, and you want to keep your eye on them. Basically, the bills will be putting some teeth back into our, our enforcement on retail theft and a couple other parts there. Fentanyl is one of them. Watch, watch for those bills. They will be open ballot bills on your November ballot, and they're very important to get some control back in our cities, especially with law enforcement in a lot of big cities being hampered by defundies, by defunding and everything else. So I would just say, keep an eye on those bills. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
We have program moods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, June 4th, I sat on one of the webinars to discuss or listen to Cal Cities discuss the bills. It, it's just a frenzy up in Sacramento, and it's amazing the amount of danger they can put us in in a very short period of time. And, and keeping an eye on the ball, I want to thank, I guess it's city manager-elect, I don't, I don't know, but Samantha Argabright for letting me continuously bounce legislation, information and questions off of her to make sure that we were not only following as a city, but acting on and speaking out for and against different things. I had a brief meeting, my first Community Economic and Human Development Committee briefing. This is a subcommittee of SCAG, of which I got elected to vice chair, and this is the first one where staff gets together and says, here's what's coming up for the meeting that week, which brings us to Wednesday, June 3rd, where I also attended the EAC Executive Committee Meeting as the vice chair for SCAG and experienced that for the first time, which was 15 minutes of activity, followed by overnight downtown, waiting for SCAG's meetings to start. Also on Wednesday, June 5th, as the representative for the city on Clean Power Alliance Board, I have pretty much a standing meeting with their CFO or their contracts person to go over all of the redacted contracts that they're going to ask us to vote on, because I refuse to vote on a redacted contract. And I'm learning about the business model of the Clean Power Alliance in the process. And so that was actually very helpful and allowed me to vote. On Thursday, June 6th, was the actual SCAG Community Economic Human Development Meeting and the Regional Council Meeting, and then later that afternoon, the Clean Power Alliance, where I voted on those redacted contracts. After that, I single-handedly tried to rebalance the trade deficit with China, and I flew to China for 10 days, so we skip ahead. On Tuesday, June 18th, nope, that's wrote in me, Wednesday, June 19th, I was graced with a lunch with our incoming city manager to talk about all of the things that I need done in the city, mostly just to get better acquainted and, and have that comfort of knowing that we are going to transition well into your term as a city manager. And so thank you for making that time. And then I also attended the Brian Gable Retirement Dinner, something, I don't remember what happened. Blurb. Well, here, here's what I do remember happening. Someone from staff came up and said, in all of the years that I have known Brian, I've never known him to speak from notes. And as someone who's in the public eye and has to make public speeches, three notes was two pages too many. But it was very heartfelt, and you are desperately, desperately going to be missed, especially by me. Brian puts up with certain shenanigans. I don't knock, I just walk into his office. Why? Because I can. And, and it's rude, and I know it, and I do it anyway. I'm going to miss that, because Sam demands respect. On Thursday, June 20th, the League of California Cities Committee that I am on went over their current legislation that they're watching, and it's amazing the difference a couple of weeks make. One of the main things that happened during that meeting is a bill that was going to be put on the ballot got nixed from the ballot. But one of the things that came out today was, in terms of SCAG and the funding, of the REAP 2.0 money, $280 million got replaced or stayed in place instead of the 300 and so. It was a significant thing of which Simi Valley and Ventura County will benefit. On Friday, June 21st, I drove down to USC, where we had the Clean Power Alliance Board Retreat, and it was actually a great informational meeting. And it's a great school. First time on campus. And that is the end of my report.
Very good. June 5th, I attended the 20th anniversary of the passing of President Reagan up at the Reagan Library. There were a lot of people speaking that day, and it actually was a really great event. And I was, I really appreciated being invited to that. I was supposed to attend the Moore Park Association Realtors Roundtable on Friday, and I had what I thought was a very serious medical scare. It turned out to be not one. Yeah, but it, it scared the living daylights out of me. On Wednesday, June 12th, I attended the Visit Simi Budget Meeting, where I had the opportunity to give them a lesson on creating a budget. It made sense. I think that, I think that they got things really going in the right direction right now. June 14th, I attended the Clay for Canines for the Police Foundation, and you know, it's a very good organization and a fun event. And on June 19th, I attended the Brian Gable Retirement Dinner, where we all celebrated the fact that he's leaving. Oh, wait, I don't think I said that right. But absolutely, I mean, it's, you know, stepping into this job directly, first time, it was tolerable because of Brian. He is a wealth of information and was readily available at any moment, you know, to provide the information I needed to do my job, and I appreciate it, wish you well. And I am going to send my granddaughter's info for your daughter, because she is a student at the University of Oregon. Yeah. And that is my report. So. Do we have? Where am I? Any agenda items? I mean, any, not agenda items, future agenda items, that's what I meant to say.
I, I think that it was asked earlier during the, as far as the Senate's on a field lab.
Yeah, well, we'll, I think we'll work with the city attorney about the best method to get that information to you.
Great.
I mean, the fact that they're not doing anything is not true. They're doing a lot of work up there, but.
There's a lot going on that is not discussable.
Right, yeah.
And we are, we are very much involved in the discussions, and I'll leave it at that, and.
Right.
The city attorney can brief you on, on what is taking place.
Okay. Sounds good. So with that, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. And we have any?
Yeah. Can we just take a moment, since this is your final day? Is there anything you would like to share with staff, council, public?
Great, great idea.
It's, 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 I haven't, it hasn't quite sunk in yet, and my wife and I talk about it all the time of, you realize you're retiring, and people ask me about that. And it's, it's, it's strange, because for 38, actually for 40 years, I've been in government life, and it's, it's been great. It's been a great gig, don't get me wrong. I've enjoyed it immensely. I've worked with hundreds and hundreds of different individuals here at the city. And you've, you have an amazing staff working for you, I will tell you that. And that's what I think is most important is, I'm, I tell people, I'm just a guy in the, in the corner office. I'm not, it's, it's all the people that are in the audience here and all the workers that are on the streets and trimming the trees and, and the planners putting together what our community is going to look like in, in the future and, and code enforcement trying to make sure it continues to look that way. And public works, making sure it, water flows up and the other stuff flows down. And, and the, and you have the best police department in California that's led by the best chief. And we just have an amazing staff. And that's what I'm blessed with, because they are the ones that are doing all the work. And I, I don't want to take all the credit for it, because they, they really do work hard every day. And so I am blessed to be able to work with them. And it's been, like I said, it's, it's been a lot of fun. And I tell people, government work is a great career. Take advantage of it. And I thank this council, because you have made it very, very easy on me, because you're a great council to work with. And I truly appreciate all that you do, and it's made my life a whole lot easier. I thank you very much, and it actually has been an honor and a pleasure.
Well, I got to second, second your opinion on the importance of staff. Having been a business owner for my entire adult life, I've always considered the people that, that work there, the most important resource that I have as a business owner. And you can never forget that. So with that, I'm going to move that we adjourn, and thank you, everybody, for putting up with us tonight and for being here, and see you next time.